From the highest possible quarters. Agenda. Looking at the agenda, what we're gonna do is approve the minutes. Elect the officers. I'm expecting, I've asked each of Glen, the city of Joint Water to take fifteen minutes or less. And that'll bring us up to Mr. Kits and Mr. Saab with their annual report. We'd like to be through in an hour or so, so we can go over it pretty fast. So, I entertain a motion to approve the December twelfth minutes.
December.
Mr. Chairman, I had a problem with minutes, and that was that the dates were changed.
I'll try to get a motion in a second and then discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Would that be okay?
That'd be great.
But I won't forget ya. Second.
You promise?
I had to have a motion in a second. So now we have discussion.
I would like to, I think it was an error to change from Wednesday to Tuesday. Simply because we have met since the beginning of the committee on Wednesdays to avoid interaction with the Island Planning Commission, the Mainland Planning Commission, and the Board of Commissioners. So I'd like to see it switched in April back to that Wednesday. I looked at the calendar, didn't see anything else.
Let's look at the dates and put them on Wednesday.
Great, thank you very much.
Good.
That'd be a big help. They'd help everybody, wouldn't it? You agree?
All right, how about all in favor of the minutes?
You're in favor of the minutes?
We'd change, yeah, we'd do.
There's no change.
Change the date.
Yeah, we'll change it under new business, so you're in favor of it.
Yes, I'm sure.
Good, we're all set. I see you have your friend there to interpret your vote.
This is why I asked him if he was coming.
We're good.
All right, pursuant to our bylaws, we are asked to elect our officers at the first meeting of each year. So this is being the first meeting of two zero one nine. I'd like to now hold the election. Let's start by asking for nominations. And since I'm sitting here, I'm gonna take the first nomination and nominate myself as our chairman. That's a second. How about any other nominations from that office?
I'd like to nominate John Dale.
I'll wait for a second.
I'll make it easy. Withdraw my, or decline this time. I don't wanna be embarrassed by the fact. Next gentleman.
All right, I close the nominations. How about nomination for Vice Chairman? I would encourage you to nominate Mr. William Kits, Vice Chairman.
I have to watch that. My schedule's crazy so far, and I'm thinking of locking down just barely. Schedule around not being able to get it tonight.
All right, I'll have to decline though.
I'd like to nominate Philip.
Second.
Such an arduous job. I can't.
He's very good with vice. All right, the nominations are closed. Why don't we just vote on the slate? One vote.
All in favor? I call for the vote.
All right. Thank you very much. Would you like to assume your duties presently, or would you like?
We need to vote. We need to vote.
Do we?
Yeah.
All in favor? Good. Would you like to have effective immediately, or would you like me to finish the meeting? Yeah.
Former chairman.
Former chairman.
Former chairman.
All right, good. I've asked each of the three participants to give us the short version. Glen County goes first, and I think that's on Mr. Dave Austin, who we all know from the newspapers.
Yes.
You have dodged every bullet they could find.
Oh, no.
Amazing.
How do I work this? Good evening. Just quick SLOST update. This is me. The next slide is. This is what our current snapshot looks like. I think we moved from six complete to five complete since the last meeting. Just as you go over the ones that we completed, Norwich, Three Forty-One Sidewalk, Demery Road resurfacing, South Harrington Sidewalk, Ocean Boulevard was started and completed by your last meeting. And I think I have a little video of that, shows that, oop, I guess. How does that work? I think I have a little video of that. Maybe not. We'll skip that one. This one's close to being complete, Old Jessup. When I say close, all it just needs is guardrails, so we're waiting on the contractor to put guardrails out there. You can see it right down here in the bottom. It looks like now. Under construction right now, Old Jessup Road reconstruction. This is the box culvert that was put in, right here. This is David Deloche, he's our project manager here. So what we're doing there is, we're doing a full-depth reclamation. These folks here, right here, are from South Carolina, a couple of them from South Carolina DOT. We took soil samples there. We had some challenges in there because there was gumbo clay within reaching distance of what we wanted to reclaim. So we had to put some dirt on the road. We've mixed that in. This week they're supposed to put cement in the road, and then that stabilizes the base, and then it'll overtop that with asphalt. If you can play this video, so this is the video of what that road looked like before we tore it up. Speed limit on this road was forty-five miles an hour. Of course, it was a little difficult to go forty-five. So, gives you an idea. Okay. Sea Island Improvements. This one, we had some contractor that did the Jessup Road, Pepper Creek Crossing, did this. He does not generate his own asphalt, he has to get his asphalt from Seaboard. He's a, we, he's done some great jobs for us, okay? In this particular job, when he did this originally, he did not have a big enough paver and did not have a big enough roller. So, he had to, the ride was not good enough. So he had to redo that. That's why it took us twice as long to do this road. It still needs to be marked, and that's how it got us into the tough wicket we had when we had this. This was not intended to have this one under construction and Federica construction at the same time, but it just kinda happened that way for one day or two last week, or the week before. This is East Beach Causeway. This same contractor is doing East Beach. And, I come, that's not moving.
What's chiming on that one?
Is there any anticipated problems there?
East Beach? No, no, we told him to go get a new paver and a new roller, a bigger paver and a bigger roller. And so he has, and so the corset he put down on Sea Island Road now is okay. And he's going to do this, hopefully, he was supposed to do this on Monday, but he had some challenges on rain on Monday, challenges on asphalt today, and hopefully he'll get this in the next couple of days. So that's where we're resurfacing from, doing from. And this is what it looked like last week when he milled the road, okay? We closed the road while he was milling, and we closed it that night because we had this edge. And then he milled the whole road, and we opened it back up for the weekend, and it's open now, and hopefully he will get that paved here shortly. He's also doing these, paving these small roads on the island, and he's already started on a couple of them. All right, this is Federica Road, everybody knows about this one. Everybody forgot about this little section of road, but we did this during the day. It's nice and smooth, this is what you can do during the daytime. We hope that the rest, you know, you lose, you lose quality at night. About ninety-five, about eighty-five percent quality. So, you know, we're hoping that we're gonna get this type of asphalt pavement on the other, on the rest of Federica. So what happens, just on the paving process, what we do here is we mill, okay? Then we put this open grated crack seal mix, this is a new G dot mix that they're doing, and this hopefully will keep these reflective cracks from coming up to the surface. We put that on, when you drive on that, it's a little noisy, and then we'll put the final coat on. So right now on Federica, north of Demery and all the way up to Circle K, we have this open grated mix on. Tonight they'll be milling from Atlantic, milling south. They're working from seven to six, give or take some. They knocked off at four last night. Tonight we're expecting some rain, so we'll see how they do. Traffic has been, traffic is relatively busy, you know, seven, eight, starts dying off at nine. You know, as you get closer to midnight, it's pretty much dead out there. This is the two-foot widening we did, okay? So, we made a decision to go ahead with this two-foot widening to fix, I always had this on the sheet saying that we were going to do two-foot widening in selective areas, okay? What we did is we underestimated what we really wanted, and so we went in with a, once we saw what he was doing, and he had this special piece of equipment, it was kinda, you know, it caused a huge road, I mean, a traffic problem, but it was a fairly quick operation. This thing came in here and dug the two-foot path out, and then this filled it in, and the roller just came in and flattened it. It was a pretty quick operation, gave us a real nice, down here, the one we did during the daytime was really nice. As you go north on Federica coming south, you'll see the ones we did at night, and they're just not quite as good. So, and we think we've handled the areas that we wanted to handle. Of course, one of the commissioners wanted me to do more, and these guys are already gone. This subcontractor that runs this operation, he's already gone. This is the nighttime paving operation. Couple things, wouldn't be able to survive without the police department out there with us. Couple of things, we're doing intersection improvements, Sea Island. Sea Island, we're doing a little bit of a lengthening of the road, and we're gonna put an island out there for the pedestrian, pedestrian island, so pedestrian can safely cross from one side of Federica to the other side of Federica. Right now there's kind of an island there, but there's no ped thing that you can mash, there's nothing there. We're also gonna put in, I think we're gonna try and make it audible, because I've got an eighty-five-year-old man that says, "I go to HT every day, and I can't hear," so we're gonna try and use some money and make it an audible sign, like you might see up in Savannah where you push the button and it, it beeps, tells you when to go, that kinda thing.
Dave, will you be closing that emergency entrance into Lake cottages?
Don't think we ever have. We don't close, we haven't closed any entrances.
No, it's an emergency entrance.
Yeah.
It was the old road to Sea Island, if you recall.
Before my time, but the one just south of, just south.
Very close to the intersection.
Yeah, we're not, we're not closing any intersections.
On the plat, it's certainly marked, an emergency intersection, emergency entrance.
Okay, so.
And it's right where you're talking about your pedestrian island, that's why I'm asking.
Well, pedestrian island is already marked on there, it's already in paint. All we're doing is raising it and putting it in concrete, so it's a little safer.
That's where the emergency exit is.
The emergency, the emergency exit is, there's gates that are south of that, right?
John, you can just.
What Jane, I think, is saying is that we're talking about the same place. You're saying you're not closing it off. I think Jane's saying it wasn't intended to be a curb cut, and it was used for an emergency access, and now it's being used polehops.
I'll have to take a look at the plan, but the island for the crossing is right at the intersection of Sea Island and Federica. It gets currently painted. All we're gonna do is raise.
Oh, it's right in the middle of the intersection.
Right, it's gonna be a little hairy, it's gonna be a little fun building that, okay? But it's right there at the intersection, it's already painted. We're just gonna raise it up in concrete so that people won't hit it.
There's already the button there to cross, isn't there?
Not, not going across Federica, there's only a button going across Sea Island Road. We're gonna put a button so it goes across Federica Road.
Got it.
All right?
But in terms of the curb cut, you're gonna look at that.
I don't think we're doing, I'll send you an email, I don't think we're doing anything.
The old curb cut is there to go to Sea Island, that's why it's there.
Okay, all right, I'll take a look at that.
Forty years old.
You're saying it shouldn't be there anymore?
That's right, because it's too close to the light.
Okay.
I mean, it's like the thing you did at Teeters, no left turn.
All right, so, there's one add to this, okay? Now, this is in the road, off the side of the road, okay? We will have probably some intermittent road closures, but most of this is off the road. Wimberly is off the road. Matter of fact, they're gonna start working on Sidewalk tomorrow. Riverview Drive is not even on Federica, but it's a drainage thing that we're gonna make over there on Riverview Drive. The additional thing is we're going to cut the road at Colonial. And that's so that my friend Jimmy Junkin can put a sleeve under the road and run some future water lines across the road. So that's gonna probably happen next week, and that's a nighttime operation. Cut the road, flowable fill, metal plates, that kinda stuff, and then get the traffic back on it, and then fill it the next day, probably, something to that effect. We'll put out, Matthew and I will put out a public information, public service announcement, let people know kinda what week it's happening. It's very difficult for us to tell you it's happening tomorrow, because, you know, it's a hundred percent chance of rain the night at seven o'clock, it might happen tonight, might not, so, we'll see. All right, so the next, what do I have next? So, so this is Village Drainage Improvements. We are a little behind on Village Drainage Improvements. We have a meeting with the merchants every Wednesday, it'll be tomorrow Wednesday at ten o'clock, where they'll tell us that we're a little behind. We had some challenges right here, we had an open cut right here, and there was a gas main, and it took about two weeks for the gas guys to come out here and fix this. This is gonna get fixed tonight, this hole will get filled tonight. All this work down Butler should be taken care of tonight. The fun will start towards the end of this week and next week, when we start moving down Mallory Street. This is the other sidewalk at Chapel Crossing. This guy is starting to put dirt out on Chapel Crossing, and he's starting again this week. He was over on Jekyll Island last week, or last couple of weeks. Since he did Ocean, he went to Jekyll, and he's coming back to us. So, already got actually one compliment from a citizen that said, "We've been waiting for a sidewalk for a long time." This is where it's going, you can see Chapel Crossing and the locations on the south side. Under bid, we've got this sidewalk here. This is being done by Stacy Culberth through our Community Developments, and I think he's got it on the east side of the road, is that right? West side of the road? Huh? It's closest to the spur, okay? And it's a typical section of what the sidewalk's gonna look as in relation to the pavement. L-MIG, we have an L-MIG that's going before Finance Committee next week. So, the L-MIG is, part of it is the local maintenance improvement grant that we received from the state, about a little over six hundred thousand dollars, and the remainder is money that we're using out of our resurfacing account that we have in SLOST. Forty-seven roads, total of twenty, almost twenty-four miles. This is a list of the roads, and I can give that to you separately, or you can take it home with you. And then we have a bid opening, we're gonna try this one again, the bid opening next week, or not next week, only second Friday, this Friday, on this, hope to get this on February's finance meeting too. Under design, same list we had. We're moving on these things. Had a, had a, had a meeting on East Beach Causeway roundabouts with the two commissioners and Mr. Hours a week ago, because we have some, and with Mr. Junkin, because we have some integrated challenges there. And that's all I have. Oh, I got a question, I got one other slide. So as we work through this, we try to put lessons learned down, okay? One lesson learned is to not get, because there may be another SLOST coming up, who knows? We're always looking at that kinda stuff. So, one lesson learned is to put a project on there you know can be built, okay? So there's challenges when you have stuff that you, you have to get an easement, or you have to get a this, you have to get a that. It would behoove us to make sure we can do that before we put on a list. Accurate project estimates, we're working off of estimates from 2014 right now. So, you know, it's difficult, and then we had some, some good inflation here in the last little while on construction projects. So as we put together, if we put together a 2020 SLOST, you know, we're gonna be putting that SLOST together in 2019, some of those projects might not get worked on until 2023, so. And it's difficult to add a whole bunch of money to it, because I remember Mr. Hours standing up in front of a town hall meeting, and somebody saying, "Gee, that intersection of Altamian and the spur, four million dollars," you know? Well, you know, in actuality, we could have probably used five million dollars, you know? So, at that time, it seemed like a lot of money, and he was getting questioned about that. And then we do, we do pretty good within, if it's a simple design, we can save money if we do it in-house. And that's all I got, questions? I don't know if I'm over fifteen.
Can you give us a report on the bond from Demery?
Can I order help you with the questions?
Yes.
Let's do Philip, and then John, and then.
Ken can go before me, I'll. Oh, okay, then I'll go after Paul.
List, so I'd like to have her go through that list.
Over on Old Demery, I guess it's the lift station, we're in the staging area for the equipment. Are there plans to restore that, because it's really torn up? Is that something in your budget to resaw it?
No, we'll, we can take care of that, we'll look at it, yeah. And I know, I had to cut down a tree last year, I was looking at planting a couple of trees in that area.
It's gonna be an eyesore when they're done.
Yeah, gotcha. Yes, sir.
Two questions about Federica Road. The, and both of them pertaining to the two feet. The two feet's been added, and then you're doing the entire surface on top of the two feet and resurfacing old Federica? So it'll be monolithic, or is it?
Yes, but they gotta paint the white line, so I still got two feet. You know, I told them, "Don't paint me a white line that shows that I got a, now I got a twelve-foot lane. I still need the right lane," so that I'm showing that, you know?
But that two feet that's been added, that was kinda the equivalent of what Federica is now, and then it's gonna be surfaced in total?
Well, except for the part north of Circle K, off there by Seapalm's. We just put, we put it out there, and that's not, that's not scheduled for resurfacing.
Okay, I get, and then the second question, someone asked me this question. Apparently the two feet was added, and the work was being done while there was a change order or something that was to be presented to the commission on Thursday night, and you started it on Tuesday. I've been out of town.
Yeah, well, so, so the equipment was in town, he was getting ready to go to another job. We had to make a decision either, we had a thousand feet, or we had two thousand feet in the budget. We needed seven thousand feet from the latest thing. So, we had him go ahead, okay? We have, our contracts are built where, you know, we count every load ticket, we pay for what's in place. So, there is a little bit of contingency that we have, that we could cover that. You know, it was, what was it, seventy-something thousand dollars out of one point eight million dollar contract. So, we thought we'd have it covered.
And you, the votes and the cost?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, add to that, John, to your question specifically. That contractor, you know, we told him, "We're not authorizing this. If you wanna go ahead, you're going ahead at your own expense, at your own risk, because the Board of Commissioners may choose not to approve it. We're gonna recommend it, but they're willing to take that risk." So staff never committed to it, we allowed them to go ahead, but that was totally at the contractor's risk.
I got it. It was an executive decision that you passed on to the contractor, and at the end of the day, county wins.
I mean, we're kinda doing the same thing with Joint Water and Sewer. They have agreed to a twenty-four thousand, about twenty-four thousand five hundred dollar road cut. They're working out the money. Contractor knows that he's gotta get it in, because he's got, he's got resurfacing that's gonna happen. So, thank you, Dave.
Okay, Jane, unfortunately these gentlemen have taken up all your time. But I think we could squeeze in a couple of your questions.
Thank you very much. Well, I think, Paul, you were the one that was gonna follow up on that bond issue for Demery Road. Has that been paid yet, or has, where, has that money come in?
The bond for the.
The bond to cover the extra lane there at Demery and the turn lane for the reserves, and you reported. And you reported on that a few meetings ago and said you were still working on it.
Well, I, as I understand it, still being, the, the, the last I heard was that the, um, our finance department and their accountants were coming to an agreement as to where that money was. They seem to feel that it's with the counties, and we seem to feel it's, it's in their office. Pam Thompson has been more involved in that.
Okay, so nobody tonight can report on that, Mr. Hours? Do you know where that is, or where we are on that?
That was, that was what, what we heard at the last meeting, was that, that was where, trying to, uh, come to an agreement as to where that money, the, the money had been identified is, if it was still resided with the county, or if it had been refunded.
Okay. And then a lot of questions that I've had from the public is start date and finish date. So when you mark things complete, could, could you also add the date?
Sure.
Does anybody know the date?
Well, I mean, it depends. I mean, uh, yeah, when we finish construction, the date? When we finish giving them the last dollars, the date? You know, I mean, what date would you like to have?
Oh, I think the, the construction date, which is what people wanna know.
Okay, the start dates are a lot harder. I mean, if you ask me when the, uh, the animal control facility's gonna get started, I can't give you, uh, an answer to that. If you ask me, uh...
The finish date, that is one of the questions I had, was when is the finish date for the animal control?
I, I, I don't know.
You don't even have a start date?
I don't even have a start date. I wouldn't be able to give you a finish date. Same thing with the Veterans Memorial. I can tell you that we're looking at, uh, working on bidding the Veterans Memorial. I can't give you a start date or a finish date, cuz usually we get with the contractor, we give them a certain amount of time. Then we huddle with the contractor, he gives us a better amount of time. And like I said, when we first started this thing, you know, it takes a long time to get one of these projects moving, funded, you know? So my, my mission is also always a quality job within budget. I mean, whether it's a week late or two weeks late, unless we've got a hard date on a Veterans Memorial, doesn't really make a difference. And a hard date would mean we got Veterans Day coming up, or Memorial Day coming up, or something that we have to get ready for.
Or an event.
Yeah, otherwise, the public forgets about those dates. They just talk about, "Well, you didn't do this right."
Right.
Okay, so we fall back on quality.
Have we got time for one more comment? The, on Wednesday and Thursday of your nightmare week, uh, I wondered if the, if the Chamber of Commerce couldn't have been a help, because you seem to have worked so closely with the village commerce people. But the dentist next door to me said that none of his customers could come. He lost nine clients that day. The dress shop down the way said nobody could come in. So it did hurt a lot of businesses, and I'm thinking, you know, if word had gone out to the Chamber of Commerce, or even, um, I don't know, I don't know how you would've managed it, but...
Uh, well, it...
That would be a situation where...
The contractor said that was the worst he's ever seen that issue before. And, uh, and that drove him, that drove him into, uh, night operations, you know? Yes, and even, even, uh, so, I mean, uh, and even the night operations are a challenge, cuz, uh, some folks don't adhere to, uh, cops or, uh, or people out there that are trying to direct them. So, I mean, it's a, it's a interesting...
And then we even saw nurses trying to get to the hospital on foot, you know, that kinda thing, a lot of medical problems.
I, yes, uh...
I know there's no easy solution. I'm just thinking that the Chamber of Commerce might be in a situation where you even just got twelve hours.
Well, I mean, we put out, I mean, we, we've had some meetings on what to put out, how to put it out, where to put it out. And, uh, uh, and, and Matthew's been a, a big help along with Catherine and, and the Commissioners, and Mr. Hours, and, uh, uh, and so we're trying all avenues. We're even looking at Code Red, I think, now, too. We're talking about sending out a Code Red announcement, telling them we're paving. But, uh, sometimes it's incredible. You, you can, the north end, north of Sea Island is incredible, where the folks come from. And then, a lot of times, you can start paving, and people just, they just, I mean, I, I really don't know what to tell you. I, we, I do apologize for it. I mean, it was not supposed to be that bad, uh, and, you know, it didn't help that the, the vehicle, the, 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 the piece of equipment broke down for two hours. Couldn't get out of the road, you know, that kinda stuff. That happens.
Nightmare.
Yeah.
Uh, one more question, sir.
Sir.
Um, with the, uh, the Village project, I know you mentioned that you were a little behind schedule. Is there, um, do you foresee that continuing, or is that somewhere we can be able to make up?
Probably gonna continue. Uh, we do happen to have the, uh, project manager back here. It's come, Neil, you wanna say anything? I put you on the spot. Come on up. Neil's an, Neil is an island resident, okay, and is down there every day. He's with, uh, Georgia...
G W E S.
G W E S, who's, uh, who designed it, and also, uh, come on, man. And, uh, and also is doing the management.
Did not expect this.
Yes.
So, Barrett Neil, um, so I'm down there every morning, uh, every afternoon, make sure everything's going, uh, according to plan. We ran into a few gas conflicts to start with. She takes time, so we're waiting on, we're waiting on Atlanta Gaslight, so there's nothing that the contractor could do. We didn't wanna start a second phase until the first phase is completed. So that number one, uh, goal of this project is the least amount of disruption in the village as possible. So we have meetings every Wednesday, um, going forward. The area that's actually gonna be taken up is only gonna be about six parking spots. So the village is gonna be open the entire time through this. So, the, uh, duration of the project may be extended based on the delay, but it's still only gonna be six spots. So a fifty-foot-wide working area with fencing, um, composite matting for the sidewalks to be still open. You're gonna have steel plates over whatever's been covered up to, you know, make sure the village is still open. We understand, especially me living here, how important it is to this community and everybody coming in, especially with spring break coming up. So, after every day, they're cleaning everything up, making sure everything's covered, safety, and so that's kinda...
Do you foresee the possibly running into the spring break?
It depends which spring break you're talking about. If you're from Canada.
And, and budget-wise, we see we're at a hundred and one percent already. So is that, do we have anything, you know, checking to continue to go farther over that, or we're...
We're, we're okay on budget. I think I, I asked, uh, for some contingency money on that. Uh, Barrett, uh, did a great job. Uh, he's got a tough job every Wednesday. Uh, we have a meeting with, uh, at least four or five, uh, village merchants, two Commissioners, and subcontractors, and then us county folks, and he goes over the project. And, uh, last week, he had to do it all himself, cuz his boss that, uh, that comes from Macon, uh, Burke Murph wasn't, was sick. So, uh, we do have some contingency money. We are working well with Joint Water and Sewer. A couple of the, uh, operations have been done at night. There'll be pour and flow of fill this morning, hopefully this morning at seven. Uh, I went down there at, uh, I guess, eight o'clock one night, and, uh, I said, uh, why, how come you got, oh. I went down there earlier, it's just a quick story in my fifteen minutes. Went down there earlier, and, uh, the guy says, I said, "Oh, what are you doing?" He says, "Well," and then they, uh, Barrett has a guy that does nothing but, or the contractor has a guy that does nothing, but talk to the merchants and make sure they're, they're happy. And the guy says to me, he says, "Well," he goes, "Struthers' last delivery's at five o'clock. We're gonna close this, uh, road as soon as Struthers is finished, and we gotta make sure, uh, that the water's back. The Joint Water Sewer's gonna be back here. We're gonna hook this water up tonight. We're gonna make sure the water's on." So the lady at, what restaurant is that? They knew her name. She's gotta be cooking eggs at five o'clock, and so... Yeah, and so when I came in, they said, "She's cooking eggs." So, uh, now, before I went over there, they were, uh, I was walking towards that, I missed this part. Uh, some lady was, uh, dragging her, uh, her, her pail, her, her cart, her garbage cart. And two of, uh, the contractor guys helped her take her cart to the, uh, to the dumpsters, cuz they're all out of array. So, they're doing a good job. Uh, we've got some challenges. It's gonna be fun when we start getting in front of the stores. But the village, uh, merchants are engaged. Uh, if they don't come to the meeting, they get an email update, uh, every week, and Barrett sends out a report. We fired that out to them.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes. We have two Splosh signs up right now. We have one at Federica Road, and we have one in the Village. Oh, where they're completed? Well, you know, obviously, I'm in the construction business, you know? Construction business, what have you done for me lately? People don't care about once it's done. They wanna know what's coming, what's coming next. But, uh, uh, we, we have, we got two signs up, another one's going up on Chapel Crossing.
All right, Mr. Drum. I think the city is next.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Um, another PowerPoint for you this evening, and it's gonna cover some of the items that have changed. I also have passed out a much larger version of the printout, so you can read it. I'm gonna start off, uh, milling and paving various streets of the city. In our last report, we showed that we had just started construction. Now we're about fifty percent through our construction of, um, resurfacing streets in the city. As you can see, our expenditures now are up to nine hundred eighty-four thousand three ninety-three, significantly different than we were in December. And, uh, we're starting to see some changes in some streets throughout, throughout downtown Brunswick. I would say, I don't know if the map is still on here? Yep, it still is. So there's the map of the streets that were targeted, based on the grading of the streets, determining whether they were failing or poor condition. And that's why sporadically throughout the city, uh, the city engineers let me know that we pretty much have completed everything north of L Street. And, uh, there are some streets that require, um, milling the street before it can be resurfaced, some did not. So they're working on those that could just resurface first. They'll go back and do a little bit of re, of milling on the north end, but most of, most of the projects to the south, our older streets, will require, uh, milling. And so there'll be some further street paving, obviously. The contract, uh, is through April, so we expect to see it completed by April. And I don't know if we're taking questions each one, or I'll, you can just keep going, and...
Is L Street gonna be completed by April?
No. L Street's not. L Street's its own project. I'm glad you mentioned that. In fact, I, I have it marked here, uh, to report on L Street. It's a, it is a paving project, but it's also a drainage project for the city. And so we're using both of the funds in that, uh, at this point. The, the design is completed. I know we reported that back in December, we were having a little bit of difficulty on how some of the stormwater would be moved, especially over by, uh, the ball field. And, um, that's all been resolved. It's gone out. We have a contractor ready to go, uh, we're jointly working with Joint Water Sewer on that project, cuz they're looking, again, my, my philosophy is don't pave a street if we're gonna potentially dig it up a few months later, or a few years later. And so Joint Water Sewer's gonna be replacing water and sewer. I think you're upsizing some lines in there, too, aren't you? Yeah, so that'll be happening at the same time. That is ready to go to, I believe it's already been to the Joint Water Sewer Board, and it's going to the City Commission tomorrow night for approval of the contractor, and also an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement with Joint Water Sewer, since we're actually contracting directly with, uh, the construction company. Storm drainage, and we reported that we've been, uh, working on that. And of course, we're looking at L Street and other projects throughout the city. Um, one of our major projects is College Park. This is a view of this subdivision after, just after, uh, Hurricane Matthew. And the picture to the right is actually what has caused, caused the project to stall. Uh, we went through and did a study, uh, our E M, EMC Engineering, and we're jointly working on that, and we, we joined the county on that project. Uh, this actually impacts the city and the county. The basin was studied to determine what's the best way to move stormwater out of the area. Oddly enough, the house in the picture is not in a flood zone. They don't need flood insurance. So, uh, the problem is the water just inundates that area before it actually drains out. So the study, um, indicates that one of the alternatives would be to use the, the ditching that's currently there with the G D O T along the spur. And so the picture on the right-hand side is, uh, that, that, that ditch. Now, it would probably need to be enlarged, based on the study, and, uh, we've been working with D O T for several months. And I'm glad to report that I was able to, two weeks ago, meet with the Commissioner, uh, the State Commissioner of D O T, Russell McMurray, and we discussed the possibility of D O T giving permission, uh, or granting permission to use the ditch prior to the engineering being done. It was reported to us by local staff of the D O T that, "Go ahead and do your engineering, which will take about two years. Go ahead and spend the money to do the engineering," which was about three hundred thousand dollars, and then we'll tell you if you're allowed to use that ditch or not. So, uh, we were able to get some, uh, maybe some clear thinking from our Commissioner, and, uh, he came back and indicated that he would work with us using, uh, their hydrologists in their offices in Atlanta. They're gonna, uh, look at the, study the water movement and modeling it, and look at that, and determining, uh, whether they'll give the permission ahead of time, so we don't waste tax dollars. And so that's underway. So we've made that bridge over to that office in, in Atlanta, and we're working with them now. Hopefully, they're gonna come in and, uh, give us some good news. It was actually said at one point by the, the, the local D O T, and I should say the regional D O T staff, was that D O T has a policy that they don't wanna share their ditches, so there was a discussion of building a parallel ditch, with some sort of a, a, a fixed wall between the ditch, and that's what we were trying to avoid. And so that's sort of what has kinda stalled this, I hate to say, for probably at least ten, ten to twelve months, almost been about a year that this has been stalled. And now that we have this, uh, potential movement here, I think maybe we'll come back with a good positive answer, and we can move this forward.
Great.
Mary Ross Park and the development. Last time I showed you playground equipment, and some of the improvements that were very visible. And I think some people looked at the numbers, and they said that was pretty expensive playground equipment. So I wanted to show you really what some of the majority of the funds that went to, and it was, they were actually done earlier than the playground equipment. But it was actually shoring up the docks. Um, if you look down, you can see the timber along the picture there by the, the peacemaker, which is still in port. But the, the dock itself, though, it looked well across the concrete on the top. A lot of the, uh, the structure underneath had been damaged through the years. It had been, um, probably more than twenty-five years, and so as they pulled it away, they found a great amount of damage. And so a lot of the funds were used to actually, uh, restore and stabilize the docks. Historic squares, and to remind you, last time, we showed you some pictures of the, the old bell that had been restored, and some of the plaques that we had downtown in Queen Square. And though we've used very little of the funds, one of our big projects that we're working with Signature Squares, which is a local nonprofit that has done a lot of work, Julie Martin and Joey Spencer work with that. And they've, uh, done a lot of the squares that we have downtown, using a lot of community donations. But this particular square is their next project, it's Wright Square. And as you can see, that's what they start with, a blank slate for the most part, except for some trees. Uh, this is, uh, very close, right across the street from where the old Glynn Middle School used to stand. And if you look, the street kind of off to the distance, a little bit into the left, that is, uh, George Street. And it's currently being discussed whether we will close George Street, and we'll actually bring the two sides of the square together, very similar to Hanover Square, and, uh, basically do some placemaking in there, and some improvements, very similar to what we've done with Hanover and other squares in the city. And so that's a upcoming, upcoming project. Hopefully, I'll be able to, I know in the, our next report, I won't see too much progress, but hopefully down the road, we'll, we'll see a much different picture there.
How many more slides you got?
A couple. Not as many as the county. The trails, we talked about trails in the past, and I showed you some of the trails that we completed on seventeen. I, I often write in my notes, the G M S Trail, and that's the Glynn Middle School Trail. And the reason that we need the trail is because this is what happens on a, a full moon like today. This picture is actually this morning. And this is the high tides coming up on Lanier Boulevard. So now, students that live within a mile of the school, uh, are to walk to school. However, if you know the, the position of the school, it's, um, it's not very easy to, to get to it unless you're coming from the M L K side. So a lot of students try to make their way down Lanier Boulevard, and on, on high tides, it makes it very unsafe. And so our goal, and first I'll start off, the, we have, we have the Martin Luther King Trail, and we also have what's, uh, known as the Glynn Middle School Trail. So the Martin Luther King Trail is coming off of the existing trail on seventeen down Fourth Avenue, and then north on Martin Luther King Boulevard. And then it's gonna connect back to Inez Williams Park, which is just under the word Gordon Street. I should say just above the word Gordon Street. But the, the connector trail that you see going, and actually, it looks like it's going to the right, but it's actually going south, uh, towards Glynn Middle School, is the Glynn Middle School Trail. And that is really what's gonna pull the kids off of Lanier Boulevard. At the very end, it crosses a, a tidal creek, and so we have, we have permitted for a bridge in that area, so the kids can actually access it through, it's currently a dead-end road, but there'll be a walking path that'll take them down the, basically a quiet street, uh, which will be high and dry, and allow them to access the parking lot at Glynn Middle School. And we've worked with the Board of Education, so they would coordinate with that. And they're gonna pick up a sidewalk on their side, which will connect into the sidewalk system there at Glynn Middle School. So they've been very supportive of that, cuz they see what happens, uh, I guess, with the roadway each day, or not each day, but whenever the tides are high, especially at different times of the year, or when there's a storm. And so these are really two trails that we have, that's, I guess there's a slight separation there, off of, um, just north of Gordon Street there. It shows the Glynn Middle School Trail, as we identify it, and then the other is the Martin Luther King Trail. And it is our goal to take the, that, that street as Prince, where it's turning upward, or I should say eastward. And it is planned that that trail will eventually go to Gloucester, but we're still working with a state grant right now to see if we can, uh, further those funds, and, uh, we've been very successful. And we've been very successful. The Martin Luther King Trail portion of it, back to forth, is being paid a portion by state grant funds, and also being matched by SPOLOST. And any questions on the trails? Before I move on? No? All right. Cemetery restoration, I did show you some of these photos last time. Some of the expenditures had not come in, they have come in now, and so we see it's up to $19,000, but this is some of the work we've done on some of the old 1800s wrought iron fence. And Hardcuff and Park improvements. In my last presentation, I showed you the swimming pool and other things that were being worked, just to give you a heads-up of the future. This area between the tennis courts and the basketball fields was going to be some new playground equipment. So hopefully, this will be the before picture, and in a few months, we'll come back and we'll have some new facilities in there, and new picnic pavilions. And two new fire pumper trucks that have arrived, and that is, that's one project complete, as well as our rescue truck. It is, the expense was $849,000. And if you've noted, the city came up with $287,595 to match it. The, when we put the funds in, we knew it wasn't the total amount to pay for the two trucks, but we had funds set aside in a fire truck reserve that we were building up prior to the SPOLOST. But we knew it would take a while to buy the trucks with the reserve, and so we took that money and added it to the SPOLOST, so we'd be able to get them.
What was the reason it was so much more than projected? Was it increased cost from the vendor, or what?
No, actually, when the SPOLOST was brought up, we already had funds in the reserve. And so instead of just saying, "Let's save the reserve and not use it", we responsibly said, "Well, let's go ahead and just put in the difference." It was a little higher than it was at the time. The trucks have come up in cost, so I would say it was a little bit more we had to come up with from the reserve, or add to the reserve. But we did have funds set aside, actually, to go ahead and do that ahead of time. So we purposely put less money in the SPOLOST request.
So the $849, is that all SPOLOST dollars, or is that?
No, sir. The city paid $287,595 of general funds.
Okay, gotcha.
Which were set aside, and that's what I was saying. We had started a fire truck reserve prior to the SPOLOST initiative being put on the ballot, because we knew we had to make these replacements anyway. I assume what we would have done at this point, if there had not been a SPOLOST, we probably would have bought one truck, but we were able to spread that further and get a second truck, at least at the same time.
And that number does not include the fire rescue vehicle?
No, the fire rescue vehicle was separate.
Which side of the building are they on down there?
The, well, they're in two different buildings, because we still have, we have the Fourth Street Station. So one is stationed on Fourth Street, and one is stationed in the old station.
About tonight?
Tonight, they're going to be, that's right, yes. Check them out downstairs. I don't have a photo yet, they're fairly new. We tried to get one from the fire department, but we brought them out. So if you have an opportunity, come down and look at them after the meeting.
Where are they going?
They're going to be on the north side of the building, in the grass parking lot, where the jail used to be.
Good, all right. Well, I'll suggest to everyone that you go out there and bring your umbrella, and take a look at the new trucks.
I hope it's not raining too bad. We'll have the rescue truck there, I think, as well, unless it's out on a call.
How long does a truck last?
Well, that's a good question. If you ask a fire chief, they'll tell you probably seven to 10 years, but if you ask a city manager, he'll say probably 18 to 20. So...
Jim, tell us about, I'm sorry, change subject, of the amphitheater in Lanier Park that's on your sheet.
Yes, the amphitheater is, there's a grant that we've applied for, and I believe the grant's been awarded. Is that right, Beatrice? Almost, okay. There's a, it's going through different reviews, but it appears that it will be rewarded, and so the grant's going to put, we're going to match that grant from the state with these fundings to put that down there under the bridge. We're going to, probably some of the picnic pavilions, when it goes down to that lower area, we're going to remove them, or move them elsewhere in the park, and that's the area that we were looking at.
So it'll be a true amphitheater then?
Coming up on the sides of the hills, going down to the, it might be a little different. Still, we'll have a stage with a covering, but we're trying to see what we can do to keep the back open, so you can keep the beautiful look of the waterway, whatever it might be there. But we're also looking at the possibility that some pretty good winds come off the water, so we're trying to, we're trying to figure out how we might be able to do that. So it hasn't totally been designed, but we kind of put a rough drawing in, so we could get approval by the state for a grant.
Thank you.
And let's see. This is just the same as last time, we're still working with the county and the Visitors' Bureau regarding the wayfinding. We're ready to go, and I guess we're still waiting to put a contract together, that's one of our joint projects. And just, and though we haven't spent anything yet, the Roosevelt Harris Jr. Senior Citizens Center, we have an expansion coming up, it's in design right now. So we have a local architect working on bringing, there's two buildings there. It's our traditional senior center, where we have senior lunches and activities, but years later, we received a grant to build an adult daycare building to the back of the building. And so we have some folks with Alzheimer's issues, we have actually nurses on staff at the city that work with them. And the two buildings are separated by a breezeway. And so the connects, the project actually is to close in that breezeway and make an additional room that could be used, and also keep clients and staff from going out into the weather. And so it's, we'll come back when we get more details on that. And is that it? I guess that's it.
And I'm not looking for an answer tonight.
Sure.
But it occurs to me, and I know that it happens at the state level, and when there's multiple jurisdictions, but there is a bid process, and the bid is awarded to a contractor and entities, whether it's city, county, and in some cases, multiple cities, then, and I think you guys do it with insurance or something like that. But I'm looking, we've got paving, drainage, sidewalks, signage, and there's duplicity between city, county. I know you got your own whatever, but it would seem to me, and obviously you'd be looking at a vendor that is much larger than, I think, the one that David's dealing with now on the island, but it would seem to me, if you threw all of the dollars, and you went out to bid, and it was projected so many billion tons of asphalt, and you got a unit price, and then you guys could avail yourselves of that, you know, I don't know if that's what you do now for something. And I understand the politics of it, that you've got your specs, you've got your specs. But it would seem to me, when we're talking about that, and I don't want to get into answering now, but I'd just like to find out if there's, if that's a conversation worthy of having. Because we're spending millions of dollars for, I'm looking at your asphalt and his asphalt, and thinking if we got the asphalt all accumulated, what could be, you know, the critical mass reduction that both of you could avail yourselves of? And I just, I'd like to hear a conversation about that. I know it's not a SPOLOST project, but it just, it could be. I don't know if I'm stepping on toes, Alan, or, but it would just, I'd like to hear if that would be something. He could spend what he wants and spec out what he wants, you guys can do different. But one vendor knows that the unit price is as tight as a unit price can get. Just a thought for a later conversation.
Okay. We do sometimes, we'll work with the county and also Joint Water Sewer, as we mentioned, to try to find some of those efficiencies. So I don't know that we've done it on asphalt in the past, though, because the timing of our projects may not be in sync, and that might be part of it. And even some of the companies that do the resurfacing actually aren't manufacturing the asphalt, it's coming from another source, so that is something.
Signage, too. I'm looking at your signage, the county signage?
Actually, the signage, we are working together. We went together on the engineering study for the wayfinding.
It already happened.
That did, the county, the Convention Visitors Bureau and the city are doing that together. And we're standing by, waiting. We don't want to, we want to put the order in with all of us, because I think there's savings in buying all the signs at one time, and having them put in place. So we are doing that with the signage.
I just, new chairman, if we could, you know, the millions of dollars in asphalt.
So we used to do that in Florida, we'd just bid out asphalt, we'd have a standard bid.
Yeah.
But then you'd have to have multipliers on the asphalt, depending if the price of fuel went up or down. So then they got a little confusing on that. Not, not, they couldn't be figured out. But it's interesting that we just bid our LMIC project $4 million. We had two bidders, and the bidders were 60, on a $4 million job, were $60,000 apart. So, pretty tight.
Two bidders on one project?
Two bidders on one project, our LMIC 24 miles.
Yeah.
And the one guy, because he was $60,000 under the other guy.
But if you put all of his in, what you're saying is what I'm familiar with. You get a unit cost.
You get a unit cost, but there has to be some kind of multiplier, because occasionally the price of asphalt.
That's right.
Wouldn't that be the, I'm going off on a tangent, but wouldn't that be the same thing if you bid it out just straight up, and, you know, that the, if asphalt went up, or not if it goes up?
Yeah, but usually, when you do those unit price things, they're there for a year or two years.
I agree, I understand. It'd just be an interesting conversation.
No problem. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, or, I didn't cover every category, but I covered the ones that we saw activity in, so if there's some.
You know, you're serving beer at the fire trucks, right?
Ah, no, beer and fire trucks don't go together real well.
Mr. Johnson, this here, $400 million.
Watch it.
We cut that wide in, we talked about that last time.
I told you, I figured out where to get the money, right?
Yeah, you did. What'd you tell me?
Yeah. Drill for oil and gas off the coast of Georgia.
No, you didn't tell me that, that's a new one. I'll have to put that in.
You should get a royalty.
I'll pass it by the.
You can't come through without, you're right, so.
I'll pass it by the commission.
Yeah. The money's out there, you just got to get a map.
I might not live to see it, though. Well, good evening, and I'm here to cover the two projects that we've got going on in a SPOLOST. The larger of the two is the North Mainland Sewer Improvements Project, which we're in the process of selecting our engineers for Phases Two and Three, which should be the ultimate phases that add significant capacity for sewage delivery from the North Mainland area up along Harry Dreggers and beyond, down to our Academy Creek Treatment Plant. The RFP has been released, we expect our responses to be submitted on, or the responses are to be submitted on February the 27th. Staff will do their evaluations, make recommendations to the committee, and I hope by the end of March, we'll have engineers selected, and move from there to getting the designs for the project. All but the piece that we're still waiting on, I think the county's still waiting on easements, or working out the easements around the Canal Road widening and Glynnco Parkway intersection. So we get that done, and we're off to the races to rest. We're probably going to go ahead and procure, I mean, construct as much as we can, if that's still in a state of procurement, I guess. Just follow up, sorry. Robo dialer. So that's the status on that project. So we should be moving along at a pretty good pace to get the project completed, well before SPOLOST ends. On the other project, the Brunswick Project, Lift Station 4003, we've selected our engineer, or gone through the second iteration of the selection process, and we now have, Hussie Gabel was selected, contracts for $245,000. I believe it's a 60-day, 60-day design. And then we'll be off to the races, hopefully this late spring, early summer, and doing the construction to make the improvements to the Lift Station 4003. Everything seems to be in schedule, we're in budget. In fact, the approach we're taking on the Lift Station 4003, I think we're going to be well under budget, but it still remains to be seen. Any questions?
Can you just refresh our memory on that new pump station, and what service area that covers?
It's the, it's basically a big chunk of the downtown Brunswick area. Downtown as far as, like, coming from Blaustair, I can never say that, coming back towards the plant down to K Street. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
I tried to take 15. Thank you.
All right. Let's work with Mr. Kitz and Mr. Lance. You want to make that face, David?
Both of them.
Sure. Go ahead, one. All right. Oh, it's up there, should I get up there? Okay.
Do you want a laser pointer?
I'm not sure, I don't know if I can look at that thing or not. Let's give it a shot, then.
Focus. Just that one right there, the red one.
Okay. All right, so we, Chairman asked me to do a self-evaluation. I passed out, or I sent out, emailed out, a questionnaire, and that was based on my experience there at the Audit Committee, we did the same thing there. So some of the questions were a little leaning toward Audit Committee as far as, as opposed to Oversight. And I appreciate the members that pointed that out specifically. But generally, we went through, and I did a calculation. Did I do that?
No, I did it.
Okay. I did a calculation, or a tally of everyone that answered the questions, whether they answered them yes or no, and any comments that were provided. So this is a brief summation of that. We ended up with, essentially, the committee did, well, I should say, as far as the questionnaire was concerned, that we did perform our duties, as far as the questionnaire was concerned as a committee. We had a couple of findings in that area, those findings were, we just wanted a little more encouragement among our members of this, of this committee to participate and express their opinions a little more. A little more training of the committee itself, our members, making sure that we are aware of what we have to do, and clearly defining and understanding the role of Oversight, again, as opposed to as an Audit Committee or anything like that. So, and again, this report is just for the statement of what we found, not any actual answers, and to the committee for us to determine the answers for what we are going to find. But I'll go to the next page. To another page. Okay. And this is just a brief tally. First set of questions there were 12 questions, based upon roles and relationships. If you can just run out just a little bit more for me. We had a few comments there on, and included in this, and I believe I did email it back out to the committee, we had comments on questions 2, 4, 5, 6, those are actually at the bottom of this document, and I can go through those a little later, or you can go through those a little later on your own. But these were the tallies of percentage answered to yes, no, or not sure to those questions. Again, one of the findings was that we just need to make sure that we understand what Oversight is, as opposed to maybe even regulating what everyone else is doing. The next section covered government activities. Again, this was our yes, no, or not sure answers. In those comments, again, 1 and 4 pertain particularly to what is our role of Oversight. That was a kind of a consistent theme throughout. I don't want to go through and take up too much time, though, we pretty much went through all of that, just through these, our risk factors, we pretty much had no risk factors, our technical proficiency, there were some who wasn't sure if every member was technically proficient in what they were looking for, and again, wanted to make sure that we knew what Oversight was. Our communication process was fairly well between the committee, the governing body, and the public. All that came out pretty well there. Again, if we can just continue to move down, I gave a brief tally. We had a grand total of 35 questions, grand total of 46 answers to those 35 questions. You can see we answered 30 percent were answered to yes, 21 percent, or excuse me, 45 percent to no, and 11 percent to not sure. And I think that, this is a list again of the questions which is attached to it, and this is the exact same questions I emailed out to you guys. And I have taken opportunity, after I went through this, I did take a little time, and I was able to go through this and find some additional questions more relatable to an Oversight Committee. And if we, well, when we decide at the end of the year to do this again, I'll be more than happy to share these questions with you, and hopefully those will further fine-tune our scope for the self-evaluation. Any questions?
Well, it does seem that.
Are you all suggesting that the committee engage in some additional training? Because I think that's something that could be put on the schedule only to think about a retreat. That is, that is one of the findings of the questionnaire. Yeah. So can you be a little bit more specific? What do you think we ought to know that you're not sure?
What do you think we ought to know that you're not sure we do know?
My humble opinion? I, I really don't know. I would say, let's look at, making sure that we, yeah, I could look, I could go for, figure out what the difference is between Oversight and, and Audit Committee. I do serve on the city's Audit Committee, so I do take a more staunch approach in that area. But as far as Oversight, there, there's a fine line there that can be defined.
Yeah, it seems to me the commissioners do what we view. So, this business belongs to the commissioners. Our job is to represent the citizens. Being sure that the commissioners are dealing on these projects are fully disclosed. And down toward the end of the line, if there's some money left over, or we need some more money, or whatever, that's, there'll probably be some things we get to do. At this stage, I think we just, we better watch that. We're doing pretty well with that.
You know, it'd be interesting, and this is my second meeting, so I don't know, but I would like to know what the city, the county, Jekyll's and non-entity, but the Joint Water and Sewer, their opinion of what they think we're doing in terms of, are we meddling? Are we doing good Oversight? Because, you know, I don't know if I'm overstepping, what I said to Alan and David, if I'm overstepping my bounds by saying, can we consolidate all the pavement? I'd, I'd like to get their comments. I mean, I, I, I think I have, you know, I don't know. I, I'd like to see what they think before I go ahead and have a retreat. I don't know. Would that put you in an awkward position? It would? Would it be the first time?
Well, one of the things we've talked about all along is getting the information in time to read it for the meeting. And that certainly came up in your survey. We need the information. Also, it comes in on a spreadsheet that I printed out, but now, when I come to the meeting, it's in a different order. And then the slide presentation is in a different order. So I'm, my thinking is one through sixteen, but all of a sudden then I'm getting a sheet that goes sixteen, twelve, fourteen, and so-
Let's address that problem. Matthew, you've explained to me on several occasions that you simply cannot compel these various departments to respond timely. Could we get Mr. Hours into that? And, and let's get this stuff in advance. We've asked for it repeatedly.
Yeah, this one, I was a little behind, on this one. I've got a lot of stuff going on, so I was a little behind on this one. Usually I get the, the advanced warning out, or the request for documents out about three weeks ahead of time, and I was only a week on this one. So that's on me for this one.
Well, it would be good if the slide presentation could follow what we've gotten in writing. I'm saying, instead of jumping all over.
And these kind of things, and with all due respect, it would be good if this were distributed as part of the agenda. You have it, these are Jane's comments. And then staff can have them and, and, you know, incorporate some of her comment.
Or anybody's comments.
Well, you know-
Takes time to read it.
I, instead of, and I'm not being critical, but instead of getting it at the meeting, you gotta incorporate it.
Matthew, what's the law on how soon we can do an agenda? Is it about three weeks before the meeting?
You cannot do it before, two weeks before.
Yeah.
Are you okay with doing that?
So, Matthew and I have tried to work hard to have, be right on the line there, so as soon as we can put it out, we do put it out. But it seems to me that maybe some more preparation of things to be distributed and so forth in advance, which could be encouraged.
And I understand to you that, you know, from my perspective, I, I actually appreciate a little bit of the last-minute feedback and comments because, you know, I feel like we don't meet very often, so it's nice to be like, oh, and guess what? We finished this this week, or this is a delay that's happening, you know, as of yesterday, or this is a photo from this morning, Jim, or, or whatever. So I do appreciate some of that dynamic and, and real-time info. I think the farther we stretch it back and push, you know, the more out-of-date the info's gonna be, you know, and so.
Yes.
And that's one reason you have, the current, what you got today is different because we didn't meet until, we didn't have a chance to meet as a staff until the fourteenth. So, and I sent, I sent the original one out on the tenth or something like that. So it changed a little bit between, it was updated.
Alright, Alan, I think just the more we can do to-
What do you need?
Without, Lance's point is exactly right, that Dave wants us to know what's happening. Like, this morning on his projects, we're never gonna be able to get to that. Theres of having spreadsheets and so forth, full-size. I know John doesn't have email, maybe we could do an express mail package or something.
You're on fire, David.
I'd like to commend all the three entities for the vast improvement in their reporting jobs over the last eighteen months. It's really, it's gotten easier and easier to, to understand where things are going and, and follow, and ask the questions that Jane asked tonight.
Go ahead.
Thank you for doing what you're doing.
Well, this is the first Citizens Oversight Committee, and we're breaking ground here. So I think it's going great.
Finishing up the annual report section on the agenda. I passed out a document and emailed it about four o'clock to everybody. I felt there was a need to take all the hard work that Lomian did and put it with some other documentation that would help support it. And really, for some of us, for me, this is kind of a refresher. The whole purpose, why I initially brought up the whole annual report idea, was number one, we felt like we maybe weren't necessarily communicating effectively to our citizens. And so this could be a yearly summary that we would present both to the city and county commissioners in a pub, public forum, and also make this available as a press release to the newspaper and so on and so forth. So with that being said, it's just a very basic intro letter from the chairman. And again, this is just my words, but we can tweak that if necessary. A quick summary of the collections to date. Again, distributions to each entity. And then I just listed out completed projects. Based on our meeting today, there's already some changes and tweaks that I need to, to make on these numbers.
If, if we follow this.
Yes, sir.
And just, Glen County has collected thirty-eight million. They've received twenty-one million, and they've only spent a million eight ninety-five to date. Wow. Okay.
And, and the conclusion is-
We're getting an awful lot for a million eight.
Yeah, yeah. But again, that, that is just completed projects, so there's obviously been additional expenditures of a lot of projects that are in process, yeah.
Yeah.
There's asphalt going down on the rest of the-
Oh, I know. But this is closed out. Got it.
Well, I'm gonna ask you a question. Is this, does this look like a good press release format to follow?
Open records.
I think this is really a, a great beginning. I would, I would, you know, I'd be happy to make a couple of comments to you and email to tweak it a little bit. I think, you know, a couple of graphics-
Scratch it, I'll hold back some of it.
And a, and a percentage, make it, you know, but no longer than two pages. I think, I think that's really good in one page. It's the way to go, but, but progress is being made and money is being spent in an apparently wise and reasonable manner.
Yep.
Alright.
So, Mr. Chairman, do you want to? I would love to, you know, obviously, jacking this out a little bit. The rest of the members want to provide feedback, let's say, over the next two weeks.
Yeah, let's do that.
And then, and then we can finalize something and get it out.
Everybody's got a list.
And then B, then give him the press release. Got it.
And then I also love for, I'm happy to present to the city commission if somebody else would like to volunteer to present to the county commission of also, you know, we get on the agenda. Involved here. Alright, Mr. Vice-Chair, do you want?
Good. I wanna be sure we don't pick Tuesdays.
Thank you.
And I wanna tell you why that is. Tuesday is my poker night. And the game started fifteen minutes ago, so we don't do Tuesdays. You thought it was because of you. It's actually-
Why did we change from Wednesday to Tuesday?
It was mistaken.
So let's pick the next two days.
Well, April, can we get April fixed to the twentieth?
Right.
Say that one more time?
Well, it's, I think it's April the twentieth is the Wednesday.
It was the sixteenth, so we're going-
Oh, no, then it would be the seventeenth.
The seventeenth.
The seventeenth of April.
Yeah, okay.
Is that alright?
I think it's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Wednesday.
Wednesday, April seventeen.
And that's as far as we've gone out so far?
As far enough, isn't it?
Yeah, that's right.
Chairman, that's the night of the Brunswick City Commission.
On a Wednesday?
Yeah, they do Wednesday. Yeah.
It's probably why we did a Tuesday.
Yep.
And Thursday's the county commission's.
How about, how about Wednesday the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, Wednesday the twenty-fourth.
That's the fourth. Alright, Wednesday the twenty-fourth?
Yes, April twenty-fourth.
Why do we have it at five-thirty? It seems like other meeting meetings are starting at six.
So we can get out of here.
At some point, we'll think. Interview rights are coming up.
You know, they don't open your conversation for almost two hours. But you can always ask.
How are you? Just trying to figure out how to, you know, how to figure out how to put this thing in.
Yeah, well, we, because there's no, the way we do things, there's no opportunity to come at the Congress or something. Sometimes you can be, if there's an opportunity that calls attention to certain things.
So I need to screen, have what you're doing.
Yeah, it's really important. Turn on the- Okay, okay. You know that part.
Okay, good.
What about the twelfth?
Twelfth is a Wednesday now.
Yeah, can't do the twelfth.
I can't do the nineteenth.
Oh, I don't know. Nineteenth is the city commission, and so it'll be, to keep in rhythm, it'll be the twenty-sixth.
Alright, twenty-sixth, the chair. So, twenty-fourth of April, twenty-sixth of June.
Okay.
Alright, how about a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
How about a second?
We got two seconds.
All in favor. Congratulations.
I actually have to put a motion in, recommending a function.
Let's do a good job.
The commission holds public hearings for rezonings, conditional and special use permits, and ordinance amendments. The planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. The report evaluates how the proposal confirms the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applications shall have the opportunity, applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of the applicants to make presentations, presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings and public comments will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Okay. First, first order of business is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held January 15th, 2019, subject to any necessary corrections.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to make a motion to add something to the agenda.
Okay.
A discussion on the site plan for the Coast Guard. And I've spoken with staff about this as well as some commissioners.
The chair does not agree with your request. The chair would entertain a motion.
I think a motion was made.
I made a motion.
Okay, but it's not required, the agenda item doesn't require a motion if the chair, unless the chair decides not to accept that.
Okay.
So you want to make a motion to the full commission?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to discuss the site plan for the Coast Guard station.
Second.
Okay, discussion, we have a motion and a second to discuss a topic not on the agenda, which is the Coast Guard Park Site Plan?
Yes.
Okay. Do we all have a discussion about the motion? I open that up to the floor.
Do we have a site plan to look at?
Good question.
Well, that's part of the discussion.
Okay.
As to why it, and I want to question as to why we are not looking at the site plan.
Okay.
All right. And as I said, I've spoken with county staff.
Is staff, excuse me, is staff prepared to support a discussion? Ms. Leaf, or...
Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. Yes, if the board decides to add it and votes in favor of adding it to the agenda, we can discuss it. There is no site plan, as you were, on the site plan, or on the agenda this evening, nor do we have a copy with us, but we can discuss that matter if it is the board's pleasure.
Okay, may I ask Mr. Worley to address the question as to why it is not an IPC item?
So I think the question is why is the site plan not coming to the IPC? The answer is sort of twofold. One, the county ordinance requires site plan approval for a certain list of types of uses. This, the Coast Guard Station is county-owned property, is zoned public. A public use is not one of the uses that's listed in 619 for site plan approval. Also, generally speaking, county-owned property and county-owned properties are not subject to the zoning ordinance. So even if 619 were to apply to this type of development, which it doesn't, state law and case law is pretty clear that county-owned property is not subject to the zoning ordinance.
So have we, in the past, we voted on, or we have looked at site plans for county properties before though, correct?
I think some rezonings have come through for airport property, which is county-owned property that's leased long-term to the development authority. Also off the top of my head, I can't recall if there are any site plans associated with that, there may have been. I think those have been treated a little differently because they are under the control of a different entity. And also sometimes too, it's just a matter of bringing it through, you know, for courtesy's sake, I guess, so to speak. But there's no legal requirement that a site plan come to the IPC for county-owned property.
Okay, can I?
And actually, let me add to that, too. Some of the uses, because the airport property is leased out to the development authority, and then those oftentimes are put to a commercial use. That would be the reason those would come to you for site plan approval versus this one, which is just county-owned property being put to a public governmental use.
Okay. We've probably answered some of your questions, Commissioner Kate, but I'd like to call the question. All those in favor of the motion to add an agenda item for the Coast Guard Park Site Plan? Please show your, raise your hands, those that approve? Four? Okay. Those not in approval, sorry, nay? Okay, four to two, is it? Okay, so we will add that to the, to other business? Okay. First, first order of business is to approve the minutes from the January 15th, 2019 meeting. Is there a motion?
At this point, am I to make some corrections or amendments to the minutes?
To the, to, well, we need a motion to approve and then...
And then we'll discuss.
I'm sorry, I don't know. You see, there are issues with the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
In reference to the construction equipment, I did question the construction equipment, whether or not it would be, whether or not it would be a problem there. And also, I talked about the traffic backup.
Okay.
It was not included in the minutes.
Okay. I saw a reference to traffic issues. This is for the Oglethorpe Avenue duplex project?
Yes.
Okay. I do remember.
Well, on behalf of the existing commission, welcome to the new members. And for tonight and for the record, this being your first meeting, I'm going to read through the full set of meeting procedures. I know most of our citizens that come on a usual basis are well aware of them, but please, please indulge me for a minute here. The Islands Planning Commission considers applications for site plans and village preservation permits. In addition, the Islands Planning Commission considers requests for rezonings, conditional and special use permits, and ordinance amendments. The Planning Commission makes final decisions on site plans and village preservation permits. It makes recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on rezonings, conditional and special use permits, and ordinance amendments. The Islands Planning Commission allows public comments for site plans and village preservation permits. The Commission holds public hearings for rezonings, conditional and special use permits, and ordinance amendments. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. The report evaluates how the proposal confirms the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applications shall have the opportunity, applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of the applicants to make presentations, presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings and public comments will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Okay. First, first order of business is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held January 15th, 2019, subject to any necessary corrections.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to make a motion to add something to the agenda.
Okay.
A discussion on the site plan for the Coast Guard. And I've spoken with staff about this as well as some commissioners.
The chair does not agree with, with your request. The chair would entertain a motion.
I think a motion was made.
I made a motion.
Okay, but it's not required, the agenda item doesn't require a motion if the chair, unless the chair decides not to accept that.
Okay.
So you want to make a motion to the full commission?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to discuss the site plan for the Coast Guard station.
Second.
Okay, discussion, we have a motion and a second to discuss a topic not on the agenda, which is the Coast Guard Park Site Plan?
Yes.
Okay. Do we all have a discussion about the motion? I open that up to the floor.
Do we have a site plan to look at?
Good question.
Well, that's part of the discussion.
Okay.
As to why it, and I want to question as to why we are not looking at the site plan.
Okay.
All right. And as I said, I've spoken with county staff.
Is staff, excuse me, is staff prepared to support a discussion? Ms. Leaf, or?
Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. Yeah, if the, if the board decides to add it and votes in favor of adding it to the agenda, we, we can discuss it. There is no site plan, as you were, on the site plan, or on the agenda this evening, nor do we have a copy with us, but we can discuss that matter if it is the board's pleasure.
Okay, may, may I ask Mr. Worley to address the, the question as to why it is not an IPC item?
So I think the question is why is the site plan not coming to the IPC? The answer is sort of twofold. One, the county ordinance requires site plan approval for a certain list of types of uses. This, the Coast Guard Station is county-owned property, is zoned public. A public use is not one of the uses that's listed in 619 for site plan approval. Also, generally speaking, county-owned property and county-owned properties are not subject to the zoning ordinance. So even if 619 were to apply to this type of development, which it doesn't, state law and case law is pretty clear that county-owned property is not subject to the zoning ordinance.
So have we, in the past, we voted on, or we have looked at site plans for county properties before though, correct?
I think some rezonings have come through for airport property, which is county-owned property that's leased long-term to the Development Authority. Also off the top of my head, I can't recall if there are any site plans associated with that, there may have been. I think those have been treated a little differently because they are under the control of a different entity. And also sometimes too, it's just a matter of bringing it through, you know, for courtesy's sake, I guess, so to speak. But there's no legal requirement that a site plan come to the IPC for county-owned property.
Okay, can I?
And actually, let me add to that, too. Some of the uses, because the, the airport property is leased out to the Development Authority, and then those oftentimes are put to a commercial use. That would be the reason those would come to you for site plan approval versus this one, which is just county-owned property being put to a public governmental use.
Okay. We've probably answered some of your questions, Commissioner Kate, but I'd like to call the question. All those in favor of the motion to add an agenda item for the Coast Guard Park Site Plan? Please show your, raise your hands, those that approve? Four? Okay. Those not in approval, sorry, nay? Okay, four, four to two, is it? Okay. So we will add that to the, to other business? All right, thank you. First, first order of business is to approve the minutes from the January 15th, 2019 meeting. Is there a motion?
At this point, am I to make some corrections or amendments to the minutes?
To the, to, well, we, we need a motion to approve and then, and then...
And then we'll discuss.
I'm sorry, I don't know. You, you see there are issues with, with the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
In reference to the construction equipment, I did question the construction equipment, whether or not it would be, whether or not it would be a problem there. And also, I talked about the traffic backup.
Okay.
It was not included in the minutes.
Okay. I, I saw a reference to traffic issues. This is for the, the Oglethorpe Avenue duplex project?
Yes.
Okay. I do remember.
Page three down here, we see that line here, it should be there.
Okay. She's concerned about construction.
Right, she, right, she made comments after, after I questioned it.
Okay, so your point is?
My point is...
Your comment was not captured?
Right, in reference to the construction equipment there, would it cause any type of congestion?
Okay.
In the area?
All right, Madam Secretary? Can you include that in?
Okay, in reference to the Oglethorpe project, I did question the construction equipment, whether or not it would create congestion in the area? Right, and traffic backup.
Mr. Chairman, I had, I had an amendment as well.
Okay, please.
Although, I want to speak for myself, I know that I and Desiree both questioned the FAA requirements and stated that we had not seen them before on an application when it came to the King and Prince application. And I typed that county staff then gave a brief explanation of the requirement, but both of us say that this was the first time that we had seen this on an application before us. And I sent an email, Janet Lake, this afternoon, and I have a copy as well if you need it. And I don't know if anybody, but this time, the minutes were kind of confusing this time on, if anyone else, they were a little bit different than usual. Thank you for providing the minutes here from October or January.
Okay, so we have an amendment to include Commissioner Kate's comment about the, the new checklist item for FAA. I don't know if it's approval or notification. Right. Okay, and was there a second item, Ms. Kate?
No, I just said they explained it.
Okay, right, and it was discussed and explained, correct. Okay. All right, any further amendments? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes for January 15th as amended?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the January minutes with the necessary corrections.
Okay. Second, we have a motion for, to accept with amendments and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Was that, okay, all right, thank you. That's unanimous. All right. First item of regular business is a village preservation application, VP 3947, known as 603 Mayo Street. Consider design review approval of a renovation to the laundry room and a 200-square-foot bathroom addition to an existing one-family dwelling unit. This property is zoned resi- village residential, an island preservation located at 603 Mayo Street. Parcel ID 04-04595. Eddie Wildsmith, agent for owners Ralph and Catherine Tilly. I see, I see we have Mr. Wildsmith here. If we could have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Commissioner, Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. As the chair said, this is VP 3947, 603 Mayo Street, and this is a village preservation, it is within the island, island preservation design overlay, so that is why it is before you this evening. So just for folks that are new to the commission, this is purely design review at this stage, and there are some different standards that you would look at that are in your staff report as well as the presentation. So this property is located on, on Mayo in the village. It is village residential zoning, and where the star is located is the property. The owners have an existing single-family home, and they are removing and replacing the laundry room, which was damaged in recent storms, and they're also constructing a new 200-square-foot, eight-by-25-foot full bathroom addition to the rear of the existing house. The existing home was built in 1940, according to county records, and as I mentioned, there was some damage to the rear of the home with storms, so the laundry room is being replaced in the same footprint, and the bathroom is, is a new addition, and that's only 200 square feet. So these are the plans. This is the, the floor plan on the screen, as well as the, the plan of the property showing the rear addition. And then here is the elevation, in the upper left-hand corner is the rear of the property where the addition will go. And as you can see, there's also existing detached garage on the property as well that is not being affected by the changes. And here's just a couple photos of the property, it's a typical beach cottage. As I mentioned, it was built approximately 1940, and the, the rear addition will mimic the materials and colors that are shown on the house today. So this is a, a minor change to the property. And here are your evaluation criteria, this is under Section 709.4 of the zoning ordinance. And then here are your possible motions. You can approve the application, defer the application if you'd like additional information, or you can move to deny the application. And as the chair mentioned, the applicant's representative is, is here tonight if you have some questions of him, and I'm happy to question, answer questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, CNN hearing done, we'll move on and we'll ask the applicant to please take the podium?
Good evening, y'all, how are you doing? I'm Eddie Wildsmith with Wildsmith Construction. Basically what we're doing here is just adding a bathroom and re, re, tearing down the existing laundry room that is damaged from previous storm, and going to rebuild it and tie it all together. So the, the new bathroom will not exceed past what the existing laundry room is now. So it'll just be a straight across, across the back of the house.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? Okay, it's a quiet group tonight.
I like that.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsmith.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, okay. Chair will entertain a motion. Oh, sorry, public comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for or against? Okay, CNN, VNN will close the public comment, and again, chair will entertain a motion. Second, okay, we have a motion and a second for, to approve. All those in favor, please have a show of hands. Okay, it seems, seems to be unanimous. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Next one is a site plan application that we saw in the previous month, that was deferred. That's VP 394, oh, sorry, SP 3933, 771, Oglethorpe Avenue duplex units. So we'll consider the site plan for approval for two new duplex units at 771 Oglethorpe Avenue, parcel ID 04-04042. The, the property is zoned resort residential. Robert Ursery is the agent for Swatley Development LLC applicant, and the owners are Charles and Betty Oliver. Right. Staff report, please?
Oops. So this is applications, SP 3933, and this was heard by the Planning Commission in, at their January meeting, and it was deferred to this meeting. They did ask the applicants to look at potentially saving additional trees on the property and just making some changes in that regard, so the applicants to go back to the drawing board and are back before you with those changes. So just benefit for the new commissioners. So this is site plan approval for two new duplex buildings. So there would be a total of four units on this site, and this is the corner of Ocean Boulevard, Seventh Street, and Oglethorpe. And it is resort residential. Each proposed building is proposed to be 4,103 square feet in size, and that includes garage space, and then each building is three stories in height. The density allowed in the resort residential zone is 30 sleeping rooms per acre, and so that would allow 12.3 units allowed on a .41 acre site. And this proposal does include 12 sleeping rooms, which is three rooms per unit. Concurrently with this application, there is an expedited subdivision plot that they had applied through the county, and that is an administrative review process, and we are currently keeping that application on hold pending the site plan approval from the Islands Planning Commission, because the final configuration of the lots on the site is dependent on how, how the site plan will be approved. So we're holding off on that until the site plan's approved. And so this is the, the recent revision that was submitted to, to staff. So what you have in your packet, the major change that, that you'll see, and you'll see it more on the tree plan, is this building right here that is closest to Oglethorpe Avenue was shifted slightly to save this tree right here. So in the last iteration you saw in January, this tree was proposed to be removed because this building did sit farther back on the site. And then this is the elevations of the buildings. This is the drainage and utility plan. And then this is the, the tree plan, so I'll show you, this is the tree in this location that's proposed to be saved, that was, because the building was shifted. And then they have also added a tree to the site. So there is a new live oak that is supposed to be planted right here between the driveways of these units. And then the county arborist and I went out to the property, and another, just really not a change to the plans, but just a change to the way we're reviewing how the tree plan meets our, our tree ordinance, is that there are two trees here that are proposed to be saved. This one right here has a very significant lean over the neighboring property, and is in, it's still healthy enough to be maintained on the site, however, it is in a state of decline as it's losing some leaves on the top, and it does have a significant lean. So if this property next door was ever redeveloped, most likely that tree would not make it through that process because of the location. So we are not counting this tree as counting into the tree ordinance requirements, however, the applicants are saving that. So they are proposing to keep that on-site throughout construction and beyond. And so just, and this is what we talked about at the January meeting, that there were a couple of trees on the site that were closer to Ocean Boulevard, trees nine and 10, that were healthy trees that are not going to be able to be maintained with the development. And initially, we had, the county arborist just wanted to mention, these are very good trees, but they are not currently being maintained. However, with their tree plan, they are meeting the requirements of the ordinance. And so here's the two trees that they are keeping on the property. This is the tree number 29 that does have a significant lean that we're not counting into the requirements, but they are saving. And this is the, the new saved tree, number 33, that's going to stay on the site with the shifting of the building. And then I just did kind of a zoom in of where it shows on the tree plan. And then these are your criteria under Section 619 for your review of this project. And then here are your possible motions. I'd be happy answering questions, and the applicant's representative is also here tonight as well.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Do you not say that tree number nine and 10 could not be saved? Or they will be saved?
That is correct. Tree, tree numbers nine and 10 will not be saved because of the position of the buildings on the property, but our county arborists did note those were, even though they weren't the largest trees on the site, they were some of the, the healthier ones on the property.
Okay, can we invite the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, Robert Ursery, architect, Tracy Moreland, project architect for this project. We're here to answer any questions you may have, and we can continue this discussion about any other aspects of the project.
Could you just, I think the big deal last time was concerns about trees. Can you just go through your, your process?
Yes, I think, I think from the last, the last time we met, there was an issue that we were, we were meeting the minimum requirements, and so we went back and, and looked very, very closely at our plan. We did have some room in the, with the buildings that are on the left side of the site to move those forward, right up against the front setback, which enabled us to save the 36-inch oak tree that's in the back. So, so that was, that was a save. The, the decks on the backs of those units are elevated wood, wood frame decks, so we felt like, felt fairly comfortable, even though the tree is sort of close, that it would survive being, being that close, because the decks are elevated and would allow the roots to grow under the decks, and us, and of course, the decks would allow water to get down to the root system. Then in addition to that, in sort, sort of an effort to mitigate the trees, the trees we took out, we planted an additional oak tree. It's between the driveways on the, on the unit that's on the right-hand side of the, of the site there. And then in addition to that, we looked carefully at, at the site requirements in terms of coverage, and we dedicated more area for the growth of trees. I think we increased that about 20%, Tracy. We increased that about 20% over what the minimum was required.
Okay. So you've added two trees?
And we added two trees.
Saved one and added a new?
Right. And one of the trees before was one of the ones that, that Dr. Gardner had recommended taking out, so we agreed with him that we would not count that tree. So actually, there's a sort of a net, a net gain of three trees, really, but it's only two.
Two to count.
Two, two to count, so we're, we're over the minimum requirement. So we, we feel like we've done what we could. We met with Dr. Gardner on site, and we, we talked about the various trees and how, and how we could help, help preserve those. And there's some specifications written in our tree ordinance, which, which talks about ways that the contractor will have to meet those requirements to save the trees.
Sorry, open it to the commission.
I know another concern several of us had was the traffic congestion with the construction equipment.
Right. We've got, across the front of the site, there's eight, eight parking spaces that are clearly on, on the owner's, owner's property. Those will be used during, during the construction period for, for the traffic from the contractor. Then also, we can use the pool area for the majority of the time the project under construction for laydown area for built, building materials. So we feel like, we feel like that'll, that'll take care of, of the issue.
Any other questions?
When you say there are two spaces in the front...
Bob, could you, sorry, George, could you move the microphone? It's touchy.
When you talk about the parking spaces in the front, are you excluding the tree save areas that you've marked?
save areas that you've marked on the drawing?
Yes. Those are areas that are specifically assigned for driveways and not tree save areas.
I have a couple of questions on the design itself, and it could just be that the drawing is not accurate. It appears that the pool is crossing the setback line in the back.
The pool itself, the shell, is allowed to be right up to the setback line. The deck is not.
Understood. Your drawing shows the pool crossing the setback line. So I'm just asking whether that's accurate or whether it's not.
It's shown right at it, but our intention, obviously, is to be within the setback.
Okay. And then in the front, when you've moved the building up, I noticed that you've changed one of the drawings to reduce the number of steps going up to the front door. Subsequent drawings don't have those steps removed. My question is, how many steps are there going to be to get up to the elevation of the first floor, and is that also going to be within the setback?
Yes. To answer the question, one, two, three, four, five risers. I think before, we had calculated the distance inaccurately. We had six risers. We only have to rise three feet, which could be very handled with five risers.
Okay. What's the height of the building above grade? Not above the?
Above grade.
Above grade.
There's the 45-foot, and then there's the flood elevation is three feet above the above grade. So it's 48 feet, a little less than 48 feet tall, looking at the elevation there.
Okay. And what is the material of the privacy fence around the back of the property?
It'd be a wood fence.
I think one of the other concerns that I heard raised at the last meeting was the safety of St. Simon's Elementary children that may be going up Seventh Street to get to the beach during construction. What precautions can, are you going to take to try and make sure that that doesn't happen, that they're protected as they're going past there?
We've discussed putting a construction barrier across the front of the property. The issue is where we can put it. Obviously, we'd like to have, like to keep the driveway spaces open for the construction vehicles. So the issue is exactly where we can put it. But the idea would be to barricade the front of that somehow.
What if you put it across the street so they had to walk on the other side of Seventh Street?
How to enter the street?
Build a walkway, in essence.
Right. Well, that would be the issue of location. We would like to do that. Typically, I know everyone wants us to stay off the county property, but that would be a better situation for us, and I think for the community as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll open it to public comment. We would invite those that would be in favor of the project to please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Ed Meadows. I'm a resident of St. Simon's Island. And I would like to commend the applicant. I'm not really either for or against. I guess I have the luxury of not having to raise my hand this evening. But I would like to commend the applicant for their flexibility in taking another look at this project, and I do think for the members of the IPC to have us recognize that as a result of the further conversation that we had with the, that you had with the applicant, that we now have a plan that has addressed some of the concerns that brought forward during the public meeting last month. So I think that the opportunity for us to learn here is that there may be ways in which project design can be improved through communication, and I would encourage us as a community to take advantage of working with the applicants to do that. There are a couple of other things with regard to the community. I know Mr. Ragsdale brought up about the safety of the schoolchildren. I don't have children in school in that location, but I do know the congestion of going on with the large equipment during the construction process, and there is an elementary school right across the street. It's a very tight location. The street is very small. It's got a steep curve into it. And we know that at the King &amp; Prince project that we had last month, that you had last month, they used construction fencing to create a safe passage between the construction area and the public beach access. And perhaps there is something here that could be done, possibly on the other side of the street, that would then also help relieve the concerns of the construction equipment being parked on public property. So once again, the learning opportunity here is that through creative thinking and communication, if we don't always just accept the first proposal, but talk about, is there a better way for the community? I think we can, as you're looking at the ordinances this year, I think that's one thing to keep in mind, is how do we get to the best project for the owner, the proponent, and the community? So with regard to the community, I can't quite make out the drawing. I don't recall the specific location of the property line, but the community has a significant historic site right adjacent to this project. It's the Fort St. Simon's. I don't know if the property line touches this property line, and I don't know what the law is regarding public historic sites on private land. However, the applicant will have construction equipment on the site. At that time, there may be an opportunity to perhaps work with the community to, is there something we can do to make sure to protect Fort St. Simon's, and also maybe through plantings or something else, to help set that off? Since we're going to have a major change to the corner, it is a historic site that's promoted by the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce. And so I know it's not required, or I don't know if it isn't required, because I don't know what the law says. But once again, here's an opportunity to say we're going to be having activity going on right adjacent to a significant historic site. Is there something we can do to improve that for the community? And again, that's another opportunity for us as an island to stretch a little bit and think about. And finally, I would comment that, once again, with thanks to the applicant for their flexibility regarding the tree plan, it reminds me of the media coverage that occurred during, from the discussion at your last meeting, wherein Miriam Lancaster talked about the tree plan and what she liked about it, and the fact that it might be a good model for future tree plans. I believe that Miriam was talking about the format, not the content, because, in fact, she had issues with the tree plan, which as a result of that conversation, we are now back here tonight, and you have an approved proposal in front of you. And so I just wanted to point out, I believe she was talking about format, not content. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to make these comments. I hope I didn't outlast my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Well within your time. Okay, any other speakers for pro?
I'm Julian Smith. I live on St.
Just a moment, Mr. Smith.
I'm sorry?
You'll be called on just a moment. No others for pro? Are you speaking pro?
Like Mr. Meadows, I don't oppose or support the application.
Okay. So anyone specifically want to speak in favor? Okay. So we'll move to those that, the time slot for opposed, sorry, pro.
No one else is coming forward.
We'll move to the opposed.
So I'm in between.
You're good.
Thank you. I'm Julian Smith. I live on St. Simon's Island. I want to thank Mr. Meadows for his comments. And like Mr. Meadows, I neither support nor oppose this, I have a few comments, and I have a few questions. I hope when the, when our zoning ordinances are revised, and I was at the meeting this afternoon of the County Commission where we had a presentation, they had a presentation from the people who are going to start revising it, I hope that they will come up with a definition for what it is we have here. The proposed land use, according to the staff report, is probably the only thing that they can say, two-family residential. And I think we know realistically that two families are not going to buy each of these two units. I doubt that four families are going to live in this building, this complex. This is obviously being designed and constructed as a rental, as a vacation property. Nothing wrong with that. But it is not really two-family residences. So I hope in time we will have better definitions. And this is an area that used to be pretty much single-family 25 years ago, 50 years ago, and it has become condominiumized. It has lots of apartments. It has a few McMansions. So it's a mix. Anyway, putting a swimming pool and a fire pit in the backyard of one of the buildings signals party. I'm glad that Mr. Meadows brought up the issue of the school, the danger to students, the great amount of traffic that comes and goes from the school when students are brought there or when their parents pick them up. I hope that the owners, the developers, the new owners of the property, will take efforts, really good efforts, to keep construction vehicles out of the beach access parking right across the street. That's going to be a temptation for a guy coming late to work. There's an open space there by the beach access, pulls his pickup truck in, and it's there all day, blocking the opportunity for a member of the public, for a tourist, to park there. And so on, and so on. I would encourage you to discuss with the applicant, the applicant's representative, whether there should be a completion bond on this project, a bond that the work will be done, will be finished properly, will be up to what is indicated in the design, and some kind of performance bond to provide some punitive damage, some financial comeback for the county if the county code enforcement people have to keep coming out, if the county police have to keep coming out because of traffic problems caused by the construction. I know this is new territory for you, but I would like you to explore it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other speakers like to come forward to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none here, and then we'll close the public comment. We ask the applicant to please come back to the lectern. And I would just open it up to the commission for follow-up questions or comments with the applicant.
Okay, back to the safety and taking care of the area and the congestion. Staff, Mr. Worley, what can be done to ensure that, I mean, this is a sensitive area because it's directly across the street from an elementary school. And what can we do or put in place so that if they, if someone does not follow proper safety regulations, that, I mean, what can we do to hold them accountable, other than just sending out code enforcement and everything?
Well, I mean, I guess I'd say that that's what our various ordinances are there for. I mean, one of y'all's roles here is to look at these issues and determine whether you think there's going to be, caused by the completed development, a traffic issue or something like that. If they're obstructing the right-of-way or something like that, we have right-of-way ordinances which cover that, which the person would be cited for obstructing the right-of-way. As far as a bond or anything like that, I don't know of any legal authority for you to require that, and certainly not in our ordinances right now. You know, I mean, that's just sort of how our system is set up, is if you violate the ordinance, you get cited, you go to court, you pay a fine. If, you know, say they don't build it to the specifications of the site plan, staff can deny them a CO at the end until they bring everything up to code and then compliance with the site plan that you approve. So there's various other ways of doing that.
And I was really referring to the safety during construction is what I'm referring to.
Right. I mean, I guess, you know, on the property, I don't know how much authority or jurisdiction the county has to impose any safety rules in the right-of-way. You know, we do have control of our right-of-way. If those activities pose some problem, then county staff and code enforcement and police have the authority to go out and enforce our right-of-way ordinance to prevent that.
Commissioner Kate, I can add that, too. I thought I had while listening to the comments and the commissioner's comments, is you could, we could require, as a condition, if the board so chooses, to acquire a construction mitigation plan. It sounds like a lot of the concern is during construction. So if it would add to your comfort to have a plan in place of where everybody will be parking, how the parking will be accessed, and it could voluntarily be run by the principal of St. Simon's Elementary and just get their staff input to make sure it addresses any concerns that the school staff might have. Just some thoughts I had on that that might help.
Sure. Ms. Urs.
And I appreciate what Stephanie has just stated, and I think that will make a difference. And as I say, I'm not against development. I think it's wonderful. When I look at the area and what's being proposed, it's good, but I wish it was in another location because that area is so congested. It is tight, tight in that area. I've been there to see it. And I'm not going to even beat a dead horse about the trees because I didn't see much changes there as far as the trees. When I look at, you had a total of 37. Well, you added one, which made 38. You took one away. And so I'm concerned about that since we've put so much emphasis on the tree ordinance and, you know, trying to save them, whatever. But when it comes to development, we start making all kinds of changes, whatever. And at some point or another, I think we're going to have to really start, even though you're in compliance, all the boxes have been checked off, okay, okay, okay. But at some point or another, we're just going to have to say, that's too much. But I just want to express that.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Ragsdale?
Not a question. I was going to go back to what Stephanie said. I mean, I think to Mr. Worley's point, we don't want to wait till an accident happens to have to go out and enforce something. Having a construction mitigation plan that requires a physical barrier of some sort that keeps, prevents the children from being able to get into the site while it's under construction, to me, is what's really needed.
This is Adam Swan. He's the developer. He would like to address that specific point.
So I've got a five and a seven-year-old that are in elementary school, so I completely understand your concerns. And I've worked with Mr. Flowers on other projects as far as traffic mitigation, and I would be totally for whatever we need to do. If we needed to set a barrier there, and Mr. Flowers is okay with us using the right-of-way for for through traffic, foot traffic, we'd do whatever we, we need to do with that traffic mitigation plan and to ensure safety of any of the kids that were going through that area. We do plan to fence the entire site, have multiple access points. The, I guess the, the good and bad thing about this site is we've got three sides where the, where we've got access to the site. So we'll have multiple access points for vehicles parking and laying down materials to ensure that it's not in the street right-of-way. And it's not, because a lot of the materials, as you know, in construction, obviously you don't want kids playing on them. So we want to ensure that they are on the site and they're secured with a barrier. So if it was a condition for us to get approval with Mr. Flowers, the right-of-way director for a mitigation for traffic and safety, we'd do, we'd definitely do that. So as far as the trees, when I first looked at the site, when we were, we were looking at it to develop, that was a big factor in the, how attractive the site was. And Mr. Usher will tell you, we went through three or four different concepts, and one of them included six different townhouses, so, but it, it, it was taking out a lot more of the trees than we are currently. So this was the one we came to, it was less density, and it took, took out less trees and, and less coverage. So that was one of the reasons we really liked the site is, is the tree canopy, so.
Other, other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Further discussion by the commission?
So, Mr. Chairman, Stephanie, so how do we go about that? Just to...
So if the, if the commission chooses to make a motion to approve the application, you could all, you could add these conditions. You would approve with the conditions of a construction mitigation plan would be submitted at the time of building permit submittal to be approved by staff, and if you want this school board or St. Simon's Elementary to also weigh in, then that would be something that staff would work on with the applicant and make sure we have a plan in place that is enforceable when our inspectors are going out to the site. If something's not being followed, they can enforce it on-site because there is a plan that's been in place.
Other, other comments? Then Chair will entertain a motion. If we could see those options, please.
I move to approve SP 3933, conditioned on the applicant presenting a construction mitigation plan that includes a physical barrier and is subject to the approval by staff to ensure the safety of the children going past the site during construction.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a, a motion, a second to approve with an amendment or requirement, excuse me, for construction mitigation and safety barrier. All those in favor, show of hands, please. Okay, it's unanimous, approved. Thank you. All right, moving on to public hearing for a conditional use permit. CUP 3928, known as 4342 16th Street. It's a conditional use permit involving an existing rock revetment and reconstruct, reconstruct a wooden walkway adjacent to the Atlantic Ocean in the area of Gould Inlet and Blackbanks River. Property is located, again, is located at 4342 16th Street, parcel 04-02943, Lot 6, Block 30, East Beach. This is zone, one-family residential, R6, it's within the Beach and Dune Protection District. Stuart F. Sly from Sly Environmental Consultants is the agent for the owner, Mr. Anthony Guthrie. Okay. Staff report, please.
All right, this is CUP 3928, 4342 16th Street. So the way this, this project is, came to the county is initially the applicants had applied for a zoning certification letter, which is something the county frequently issues for projects that are seeking Department of Natural Resources approval for projects within the Shoreline Protection Act. So when the county issued the zoning certification letter this past summer, it, it basically said, it looks like this project would need a conditional use permit based on our Section 727 of our Glen County zoning ordinance, which is our Beach and Dune Protection District. So based on that, before they can apply for their Department of Natural Resources and Army Corps permits, they needed to come before the county to get a conditional use permit for this work. So this conditional use permit will be reviewed by the Island's Planning Commission, and then you all will make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and the Board of Commissioners will be the final approval, I'm sorry, the final decision on this conditional use permit. So the applicant is looking to, to add a rock, or add to the rock revetment. Let me get to a picture, if that helps. They are looking to add to the rock revetment as well as repair a wooden walkway. And in this picture here, this is their, their survey of the site, and this was part of their determination from DNR, their jurisdictional determination. So this is, this is the property here, and then this is the rock revetment, and this is the Atlantic Ocean, this location, and then 16th Street is behind there. So they did have some significant storm damage in the last couple hurricanes, particularly Hurricane Irma did the most damage, the wooden walkway. The piles are still, still located on the site, but there's very little of the actual wooden platform on the walkway that's still there, and they are looking to shore up the rock revetment and add rock to the area to further stabilize the bank. So just a couple of things that, that we looked at in accordance with Section 727, the Beach and Dune Protection. The, the Board of Commissioners actually determines a development setback line. So the way the ordinance reads is that there's a development setback line that does govern what kind of uses are allowed, landward or seaward of the development setback line. And on January 17th, 2019, the Board of Commissioners did establish the development setback line, which is 20 feet landward of the ordinary high water mark. And on this, you can see it better in your packets, it's probably not real visible on this, but the ordinary high water mark is in that location, so the development setback line is 20 feet landward. So this plan actually does show the development setback line 20 feet landward of the, of the ordinary high water mark. And this walkway that they are looking to repair is, is a shared access for these lots here. So just this afternoon, we had a commissioner had asked for additional information on that, and so we did email out a copy of the easement that does show that these neighbors do also share the access and have cross, access across the property to use this walkway. And the walkway is not, it's not a dock, it really is kind of more of a viewing fishing platform, it just comes out to the rock revetment and ends, it doesn't go any further into the, into the ocean. And we do have some drone footage, which I'm going to attempt to, to play here, so. So drone footage won't be able to play because there's Wi-Fi here, but I do have some photos that'll, that'll show. So in this, in these photos, this does show, this is the rear of the house, so you are kind of standing by the water looking at the house in the left-hand photo, that you can see the, the wooden walkway. And then to the right, the pie, the timber piles that you see jutting up from the sand, that is the, what remains of the wooden walkway that would be going out to the ocean. And then this is standing on the property, looking out towards the ocean. You can see the, the existing rock revetment and those timber piles. And then this is the area that's proposed for the addition of the rock. And this is just a view from the property looking north. You can see there's a, a walkway that extends actually further than this one would out into the water, that's on a property a few lots north. And then the photo on the right is just looking south, out towards, and that actually looks out towards the, where the public access is, onto the beach. So you, do you have standards of evaluation that are in your staff report? So under Sections 904.3 and 1106 of the Glen County zoning ordinance, these are, these are your recommended motions. So your motions would be to recommend approval of the conditional use as presented, this would be recommend to the Board of Commissioners. You could recommend approval with modifications or conditions, you can defer action if you'd like additional information, and then, or you can recommend denial of the conditional use. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I believe Stuart Sly, representing the applicant, is here tonight as well, if you have any questions of him.
Okay, questions for, for staff? Mr. Ragsdale?
I just have one, and it's, it's not really a question, but in the staff report, it says the applicant has indicated the location of development setback line 20 feet landward of the mean high water mark, and in parentheses, ordinary. Georgia Code says that the ordinary high water mark is not synonymous with mean high water mark, and I just want to point out that our ordinance, Section 727, refers to the mean high water mark, which in this context technically has no meaning.
And that is correct. Our ordinance uses the term mean high water mark, and then when the Department of Natural Resources does their jurisdictional determination, they do, do it based on the ordinary high water mark. So I'm not sure if Mr. Sly can maybe elaborate anymore on the differences or similarities between the two.
I wasn't trying to, all I'm trying to say is we need to change the ordinance.
Other questions for staff?
According to the pictures that you sent us, has this walkway been used any at all?
Not recently.
Has it?
Yeah, that's...
Right, how long has it been used?
Right.
It seems as though there was a problem, they want to repair it, whatever, but according to this, it looks as though it hasn't been used in quite a while.
That is a question. I, I do not have any photos of, of what it looked like prior to the storms. It has been explained to me that that damage was a result of the storms, so, but I'm not sure what condition it was prior to storms taking their toll. Hopefully the applicant can maybe address that.
Okay, other questions for, for staff? Otherwise, we would invite the applicant to please come forward.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Stuart Sly. I'm with Sly Environmental Consultants in Savannah, Georgia. Stephanie is right that we have applied to the Georgia Department of Natural Resources and to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for authorization to install a rock revetment and repair a wooden walkway at the property, the Guthrie's property on 16th Street. A couple of things, we have received actually our Corps of Engineers permit for authorization to proceed. The DNR permit requires a local zoning letter that states that the proposed work is not in violation of current zoning ordinances, which is why we're here in front of y'all The, with respect to the walkway, it was serviceable and usable prior to the past two recent hurricanes. Hurricane Irma really did a number, not only to the walkway, but the Guthrie's lost about 15 to 20 feet of property that's on the eastern side of their, of their lot. So Stephanie, I think you did a good job. All we're proposing to do is to install a flat four-to-one slope rock revetment and restore the wooden walkway that was existing prior to the storms.
Questions for the applicant?
I've got a picture here too, somewhere, if you'll bear with me, of the walkway prior to the storm, that you can see the, the condition. I believe I do. May I approach?
Sure.
That's the, that's facing north, and that shows the wooden walkway there. It's approximately four feet wide. And it is shared by the two lots to the side of the Guthrie's.
Mr. Sly, um...
Yes, sir.
Is this, is the top of the riprap going to be final elevation 8.4 feet, mean sea level? Is that what this says?
Let me see. I'm assuming that's, you're referring to the, to the cross-section drawings?
Yes, sir.
Elevation 10 feet, finished grade seated, that's where it ties into the existing ground.
Right, okay. You know how many tons they're bringing in?
I don't.
No? No. That's all I got.
Okay. Other questions for applicant?
Yes, I have several. You confirm, Mr. Torres, question that it's 8-point-something? The topographical map that's shown there shows it, I'm sorry, you confirmed 10 feet, the topographical map shows it well below nine feet. What is the correct elevation of that walkway?
Sir, I'm looking at the cross-section detail that was done by the project engineer, Jason Ball. The contours you see are a little bit misleading because some of that, the contours that were taken were pre-storm. So the, the contours that are out there today perhaps are slightly different. I'm looking at the cross-section that shows the proposed revetment. I, I assume you see that too. And it says elevation 10.
And that's 10 feet above what?
That would be 10 feet above mean sea level.
Okay. When I look at, when I look at this, what's not clear to me, I think I understand what's being placed alongside the existing rock berm. Is anything being done to the existing rock berm?
No, sir, not, not the Johnson rocks out front on this lot, nothing is being done. This is new rock, landward, landward of the state's Coastal Marshaling Protection Act jurisdiction line.
What about the Johnson rocks that are coming up into the property?
Nothing is being done there, the, simply the walkway, the wooden walkway is being put back sort of on top or adjacent to.
Sorry. Where, where will the walkway going out to the ocean stop?
Stops at the, at the same footprint that was there prior to the storms. It stops at the Johnson rocks that are out adjacent to the river.
The drawing shows it stopping kind of midway through the Johnson rocks. The original easement shows it stopping short of the Johnson rocks.
Well, certainly if that's what the easement shows, then that's what we need to do.
So you're intent to replace it as it was?
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there going to be any excavation needed to get the area ready to put the...
There, there may be some fine grading there, minimal. It's not a big excavation project, it's to establish a bed. It's to establish a bed, to put the first layer of stone down over top some geofabric.
So, your answer is no, there is no excavation?
I shouldn't say that. I, I, there's not a major excavation activity, but I don't, it's, there may be some excavation, certainly.
Your, your permit application says none.
I guess it depends on how you define excavation. There, there is a slope there now. All we want to do is continue on that same slope. We don't want to build a mountain of rocks. We want to follow the existing eroded slope there. If something has to be shoveled around for the rocks to tie in, I don't think that's a major excavation, but there may be a little bit of sand movement.
Okay. One question, you mentioned it just a minute ago. You said that they lost 15 feet during the two storms.
Yes.
What, what do you mean by that? 15 feet of frontage?
Well, yes. If, and that's based on, should have clarified, that's based on Google imagery. And I've got an example of that I'm pleased to show you. And you can take the little measuring tool and measure the, the distance of erosion.
I wasn't, I wasn't trying to argue about the amount. I just, it's measured from, basically from the front of the walkway going oceanward?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, I think that's all I had.
Thank you.
So, this is part, this is down where 16th Street Public Beach Access is, correct?
I don't know how close Public Beach Access is. I, I don't know. You would know more about that than I.
Okay, it accesses right there, past the Ghuls inlet. And it goes right down along this so-called the beach area right there. So, my concern is, well, first of all, my concern is I feel like there's a lot going on in this application. Like, a lot is being asked to have done. Now, I went and looked at the, the boardwalk. There's no repair gonna happen in that boardwalk, 'cause it is in shackles. It's gonna have to go completely. And I'm sure you're going to, or in the application, building the dock pier, whatever, is going to pretty much block access of that, that public beach access. No matter how small it is, it's still public land. And now there are the blocks that are already in the way. So that's another concern of mine. And I'm a little confused, and maybe staff can, can help me out with this one. Why would we, why would we look at this before he, he says, he has it now, but we don't have the information from, well, the letter from the Army Corps of Engineers? So, those are just concerns I have.
Sorry, could we clarify a few things? Ms. Kate made the comment that the boardwalk is in the public access? Is that correct?
No. From what I understand, what he's planning to build would go across. The walkway after the, walkway after the ocean.
Right. And, okay, so you're saying that's in the public access?
I'm saying it would block, potentially block the area of public access.
Here it is, 2016.
Okay. I'm just having a hard time seeing the public access in the aerial photograph.
Yeah, I can address that. The public access is not, I, I thought I had a, kind of a broader aerial that I could show you, but that walkway is, is a private access for the adjacent properties, plus this property to access. But the public access is not in this location. It would be further, I guess the direction is south of this location. So, the 16th Street Public Access is further south, and this wouldn't, would not impact that.
Okay, good.
So this is private property.
But it would still be able to go, but it would still go down past, if you walk down the 16th Street Public Beach Access, and then go down the pathway, it's still behind this area right here.
Oh, so your, your question is, like, is this area public access, right here? Like, that you could walk along here? Okay. And that, that would not, 'cause that's not right of way, right?
That's not actually access area, is it? That's just beach area.
That is not public access, at least according to our records. And, which you might be thinking of, there, there are some locations where there is old platted right-of-way, but this is not a location that has the right-of-way.
Okay.
So.
So I just wanted to be clear. We're, we're not blocking public access?
Not to my knowledge, sir. You know, unless, in 2016, it was blocking public access, I don't, I don't see that being the case.
Okay. I think we, I think staff clarified that. Was, what was the other issue, Ms. Kate? Is that it? I mean, that was concerning, if that was the case, that's why.
Well, and, and again, it looks very different from this now.
Sure.
I mean, it's entirely different. And when I went and walked it, yes. And, and there were public people out there. The public was out there fishing, and, and so it, I mean, the trail from 16th Street does take you back that way. But this doesn't even look like the same.
Agreed. It does not.
At all.
That's in 2016.
It, it's misleading, because the pub, there is a beach public access at the end of that set of lots, and there's a trail that goes all the way over to their property that's well-worn, but it's crossing each one of their individual properties. Sorry.
No, no. I'm asking for clarification.
I, I just, I had a question. Is Mr. Guthrie here?
No, I don't think so.
Um, I, I just, why is he doing this? I mean, it's been a couple of years. It's, it would appear that a lot of the benefit that's derived here is derived from the other two lots. You know, are they helping to participate in the cost of the repair, or what's going on here?
I think there is, going to be, some support by the property owners to the south for the repair. The property owners immediately to the south have also applied to the DNR to continue the same rock revetment, same design, same slope. That, that the materials are gonna be brought in on the existing vacant lot that's owned by Mr. Kerr. So they are going to participate together in, you know, hopefully, first and foremost, stopping the erosion.
Sure.
And then, secondly, they would like the opportunity to restore the, the wooden walkway.
Okay.
Look, we got a lot of chatter here, I'll be honest with you. I don't think we're 100% satisfied the beach access is, is not blocked. Stephanie, do you have the aerial photograph on slide that, is this accurate? Is this, is this image accurate to today?
I don't know which image that is.
'Cause it, it shows a boardwalk that's intact. I mean, and I think we get this from Google Earth. I don't know how updated that, you know-
I'm not sure what photograph you're looking at.
Sure, that, yeah, the photo that's in the packet, no, I do not have it on the screen, but it looks like this was taken prior to Hurricane Irma.
This is satellite-
That boardwalk isn't intact in this situation.
This is satellite imagery, which is in our GIS database. Yeah, right.
This is pre-storm, which may be the image you have there.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So-
This is post-storm, as you can see.
Yeah.
This, this portion of the walkway is gone.
Yeah. Carla, is this the trail you're talking about that's gonna be blocked?
And technically, it's already blocked by these Guthrie rocks right here. It's all that county property, up until this other dock way up here.
The, these rocks are Johnson rocks, are they not?
Yeah, and some people call them Guthrie rocks, Guthrie's property.
Right, but the Johnson rocks are blocking the trail?
No, no.
No?
And I'm, I'm just asking for clarification, is what I'm asking for.
Commissioners, I might be able to clarify this a little bit. Boy, I'm trying to figure out a quick way to say, sum up 40 years of litigation about East Beach and who's entitled to what. There were a series of court cases spanning 30-plus years about who has a right to use the beach, the, the area between the lots in East Beach and the beach. And essentially, the court said, because for the majority of East Beach, the developer still owned it, but they had dedicated to the public the right to use the beach up to the high watermark. However, on the, the plat for East Beach, this lot is in Block 30. There is a note on this plat that says, "All lots in Block Number 30 extend to the low watermark." And that's why the, the lots are shown with that sort of dogleg, if you will. It's because instead of ending, like most of the lots in East Beach did, at the beach, they actually extended all the way to the low watermark. So, I, I don't think this is subject to the same public access that some of the, the area south of there, that we generally understand to be peat, public beach, is. If that's the question that's being asked, I think that, I, I don't think this is a public access area, right, for lot, at Lot 6.
Okay. Does that help? Ms. Kate?
I heard his explanation, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for, for the applicant?
Mr. Sly, the, the, the small excavation you mentioned, is that gonna be behind, is that gonna be landward of the jurisdiction line?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a good point. Okay, no further questions?
All, all work is, except for the walkway, all the rock work is landward of the Coastal Marshals Protection Act jurisdiction line.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sly.
Yes, sir.
That's, this yours? Okay, no, if no further questions, I'll open, I'll go to the public hearing, and we'll invite any folks that might be opposed to this project.
I'd like to start with someone who is-
Sorry, could you-
Supportive. Usually, you start with support.
Sure. Introductions?
Thank you. I'm Julian Smith. I live in St. Simon's Island. And I'd like to start by clarifying the issue of public access. There is the public beach access point at the end of 16th Street, which goes down to the landward side of the rock revetment along Ghuls inlet. If you look at some of the aerial photographs, you will see that members of the public, myself included, frequently walk along the area below the ordinary high tide mark. And by the way, the ordinary high tide mark this morning was extraordinary. That whole area was flooded. The, something that is not clear in this application is where the walkway that is referred to in the application is going to go to. Some months ago, there was an application before the Coastal Marshals Protection Committee to have a crossover from the Guthrie's walkway, parallel to the Johnson rocks, that is a perpendicular dock walkway, and stairs down to the beach. Jordan Dotson of CRD sent several letters to Mr. Sly, asking him why they wanted a stairs down to the beach when there is no beach on the ocean side of the Johnson rocks, because the waves breaking against those rocks do carve out any sand that, that piles up there. Now, there will be a public hearing on Friday morning at the DNR headquarters on the application for Mr. Kerr, the property owner to the south of the Guthrie's, who has a easement to walk across the walkway if the walkway is repaired on the Guthrie property. Now, it might help if you have any drawing of the walkway, or you might look at the photographs on Pages 31 and 32 of your packet. The photographs that show the so-called rock berm, that pile, you can see some of it there. Perpendicular to the Johnson rocks is an old pile of granite boulders that were placed there many years ago by a previous owner, not by the Guthrie's. And that, those rocks interfere with the right of the public in the state of Georgia to walk anywhere below the ordinary high tide mark. Yes, that is, that is the law in the state of Florida. Those are waters of the state below the ordinary high tide mark. So, people do walk along there. I have seen fishermen sitting on the revetment at the end of that, that berm you see there. And because of my advanced age and poor balance, I have trouble negotiating those rocks. Why would I want to climb over those rocks? Well, to get to the county parcel immediately north. The county owns land on the north side of the Johnson rocks. Might be a very good location for a fishing pier for the public, but that's another issue. So, I would encourage you to defer this until you actually hear from Mr. Guthrie. I don't believe he is here. Is Mr. Guthrie here? No. I have spoken with him. I have visited the property with him, et cetera. And I think he may have a different desire for what is to be done. I support repairing the rock revetment underneath the walkway that is at the edge of his lawn. That needs to be done. That walkway needs to be taken away. So, please defer this and, and get more information. Or better yet, defer it and go to the meeting on Friday morning at the Susan Shipman Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any others that want to speak in favor? Okay. Seeing on being on, we'll go to those that might be opposed. Okay, again, seeing on being on, we'll close the public hearing. And we would ask the applicant to please come back to the lectern. May I have a question? Okay. Additional questions for the applicant, or comments, please? Mr. Ragsdale?
Just one comment. I, I think that the details about the revetment itself are pretty good. It's pretty clear what's planned there. But with respect to either the, whatever you want to call it, the walkway that's parallel to the ocean, or the walkway that's perpendicular to the ocean, the, what we've been presented with is lacking a lot of detail, in terms of how high it is, how wide it is, how long it is. It's, it's more of a conceptual drawing, to me. I, I understand that you're trying to replace something that was there before, but we don't have any accurate delineation of what was there before, either. So, I mean, I would like to see more detail about exactly what that walkway is going to look like than what's been presented here.
Are there any requirements from staff? Are there any requirements from staff for more detailed diagrams? Did this diagram meet your requirements for evaluation?
So, our primary code section is Section 727 through the beach and dune, so it didn't really have specifics on what needed to be submitted, unlike, you know, Site Plan 619. We have very specific things that need to be shown on the plan. So without those guidelines, you know, we didn't have anything more specific. So I would defer to the commission if you'd like to have more details on any aspects.
The diagram I saw, it looked very similar to what the DNR requires.
Yes.
Which is a plan view and a cross-section. Correct?
Yes, that's, I mean, this same material has been submitted to DNR for.
So this meets the state requirement, does it not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we, all right, thank you.
Mr. Sly.
Yes, sir.
On your proposed activities in the SPA jurisdiction, it says that you will repair the existing four-foot-wide walkway, and then it extends 50 feet north and 65 feet, and then 65 feet towards the existing beach, and then it will follow the top of the proposed rocks. Is that where the?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I was looking for that, Mr. Torres, yes.
Thank you.
Page 2, I don't know, it's all mixed up. It's the DNR, it's the DNR permit.
Yeah, if you shuffle your papers, you're going to lose. Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
So, Mr. Ragsdale, that comment sort of locates the height of the wall, height of the walkway.
It's just a little.
Okay.
It's page 2, did you see it, of the project description for the DNR application? One, two, three, fourth paragraph down.
Fourth one down.
Section 4.0, right.
Mic drop.
Microphone, Mr. Ragsdale.
This says it's going 65, approximately 65 feet to the existing beach.
Sorry, that's incorrect. It is going to go, as the exhibits show, about midway out to the parallel rocks, as the drawings show. It's not going to the beach.
Okay.
So Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, so there has been an application filed, but we don't have that, the results yet.
The application for the Army Corps, or the, so the Army Corps, it sounds like that has been, has been approved, so we can get copy of that from the applicant. But in terms of DNR, DNR will not review it until they have verification that the county has approved it. So they have to go through this conditional use permit process first and get approval before DNR will consider it. So that, that's the step for that. But we could get a copy of the Army Corps permit, though.
Sure.
Wouldn't we need that, I mean, I know he has an, but wouldn't we need that before we even consider a conditional use permit? Or shouldn't we need that?
I would say no, because it's often the local jurisdiction and local review is the first step for a lot of our state and federal permits. So I would say you do not need to have that in order to make a decision on this application. But if that's information you'd like to have, that will help you review it. That's definitely up to you. But I would say you do not need that before you make a decision on this.
I'm just not a pro on beach erosion and everything, so.
Technically, there's really no need for Corps of Engineers permit in this case, because there's no work being done in the Corps of Engineers jurisdiction. They did give us a nationwide permit for maintenance and repair that covers both the rocks and the repairs to the walkway, or the reconstruction of the walkway. So that's how it was issued back in August of 2018. Stephanie, I'm pleased to email you a copy of that tomorrow.
Other questions, comments, please? Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All righty. Any further discussion? Then the chair will entertain a motion.
A motion to recommend approval of conditional use permit as presented.
Okay, we have a motion on the table?
One second.
Okay, Bob, George beat you. Okay, we have a motion to approve with a second. I'll call the question, any further discussion?
I'd like to condition that on three conditions. One, that there be no excavation, which is what the application indicates. Two, that there be no additional Johnson Rocks added. And three, that the walkway going out perpendicular to the ocean extend no further than the original walkway.
Okay, so we have a proposal for amendment to the motion. A second to that, please?
Someone.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for amendment to approve. Discussion? It seems the applicant is agreeable to these, these conditions?
May I?
Sure.
I understand your conditions, and I think we can adhere to all the conditions. The one question I do have is the definition of excavation.
I'm not trying to create one. Your application says no excavation, so in the context of whatever DNR considers to be excavation, no excavation.
Thank you. Are you okay with that condition? Okay. All right, any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the question then for the amendment first. We're voting on the conditions. All those in favor, please have a show of hands. It's unanimous? Oh, I'm sorry? Okay. All those opposed? Okay, five to one. The amendment's passed, so we'll now vote on the original motion to approve with those All those in favor, please show hands. Looks like we have five. All those opposed? Okay, five to one. The project is approved, recommended for approval. With conditions, yes. All right, thank you. All right, we have some additional business, other business tonight, the election of the 2019 officers for the commission. There is a note that staff has recommended to fore to the 19th, to a regular meeting, which is according to ordinance. We're in a special meeting tonight. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we defer the election of officers until the March meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second, no.
Okay, thank you. So I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to defer the elections to the March meeting, please have a show of hands. Looks like it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. We had an agenda item added at the beginning of the meeting tonight, and that has to do to discuss the Coast Guard, Coast Guard Park Site Plan. Are we discussing the site plan or discussing why we're not hearing it?
Why we're not hearing it? And like I said, I had spoken with Stephanie, and she knew I had some questions, and I wanted some clarifications from my attorney. And due to the emails we received back and forth, you know, site plan, we are supposed to see site plans and approve them. They're supposed to come before us. So that's what sparked my interest, is why, you know, it's more about process and procedure, and are we following the correct process and procedure? And so, you know, I discussed with Stephanie, they definitely called it a site plan. So that's where I need some clarifications as to why this particular site plan will not come before us and others have. And according to, and explain it to me with 619.1.
Yes, ma'am. So I stated before, this is county-owned property. I think the county is allowing the Historical Society to sort of take the lead on this, but it is county property. And the property is owned public for governmental uses. So generally speaking, you know, state law says that a county is immune from its own zoning ordinances when, you know, using the property for governmental purposes. So that's reason number one why the site plan's not coming before you. Number two, 619.1 applies to commercial uses, industrial uses, multifamily uses, non-residential uses in a residential zoning district, development covered by 709, which is the island preservation district, and then anywhere else in the ordinance where it specifically says you have to have a site plan approval. This project doesn't fall into any of those categories. So even if the zoning ordinance did apply to the county, it doesn't fall into any of the provisions of 619.1, which requires site plan approval.
So even though it's public, it does not require?
Right, it's a governmental use, it's owned by a governmental entity, they're immune from zoning ordinances, and that's the use that it's being put to.
And so the public wouldn't have any input on it at all, and then just?
Well, you know, the county Board of Commissioners has ultimate authority over county property, so it'll ultimately be their decision whether to build this or not, and what it looks like. So they will have to make the ultimate, they'll take a vote as to whether to move forward with that project. It'll be up to them as to whether they want to seek public input or not.
This was just a first for my term, anyway, as far as a site plan that did not come before us, which is why I wanted clarification.
Right, and I can see where it makes, it's a little confusing when, I think, I'm recalling that, I think y'all heard a site plan for the automated teller on the airport property. Again, that's a commercial use, and that would be the reason why it would have come through site plan, even though it's county property. I think, especially out of abundance of caution, because it is being put to a commercial use, and that is normally subject to site plan approval, that's one of the reasons that came to y'all.
I do have a question. The entirety of this property is not being used by the county, is it? Isn't there a portion of this property that's being used by a private organization?
I haven't seen the site plan myself, so I can't speak to that. You're probably talking about the surf sailors. You know, the county contends right now that we don't have a lease with them to occupy any part of that property. So at this point, it's all county property being used for county purposes.
So are you saying if, in fact, that the surf sailors do get a lease for that portion of the property that they're going to use, then the site plan would come before us?
No, sir.
Why?
Again, it doesn't fall within any of the categories of 619.1. I don't think they're a commercial entity.
I would argue they are a commercial entity. They're charging people fees, they're collecting revenue, they, it's not for a public use.
And my understanding is that they're a nonprofit. I may be mistaken about that, I don't know. Again, I don't have the details of all that stuff in front of me. I didn't know we were going to be discussing this tonight.
I know.
But again, the overarching thing is it's county property. We're immune from our own zoning ordinances.
Are you saying that all commercial businesses have to be for profit? That nonprofits are not considered commercial?
I'm not saying that. I mean, there's different, you know, depending on the context you're talking about, because we're talking about zoning, commercial may have one definition. If you're talking about whether you're exempt from taxes, it may have a different definition. So no, I'm not saying that's a universal belief.
Okay, but your position is even if the surf sailors did have a lease there, that it would still not be subject to review by the planning commission?
Correct.
Mr. Worley, could you tell us where that, the state law is that says the counties are not?
I'd be happy to send all of y'all some citations, some court cases. There's at least one federal case out of the Northern District of Georgia. There's a few Court of Appeals and Supreme Court cases. I can email the citations to y'all.
Perfect, perfect.
That would help me as well, yeah.
Could I make a different comment? One of the things that may be confusing here, because I sat in on the presentation earlier today, too, and I believe what was presented in the meeting today is not a site plan, even though it's been labeled as a site plan by the person that drew it. It's more of a master plan, conceptual plan. When you look at the materials that were presented, for example, for the two duplexes today, those are legitimate site plans. They have details of construction and exactly what's going to be done. The only drawing that's been presented, I think, so far, is just an overall conceptual plan of how that area would be laid out with parking, with buildings, and things like that. Part of what's confusing it is, it's really, at least what was presented in that meeting today is really not a legitimate site plan.
Thank you. Any other comments? And I'll just remind you, we're discussing why we're not reviewing the project, not the project itself. None? Okay. May we move on? Okay, chair, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, thank you all.